So, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call to order this November 15th Board of Ed Workshop meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For your seats there when you sit down. So, we are going to start this workshop meeting with a public comment section. I want to let folks know that there are two public comment sections. I see we have a lot of folks in the community who've joined us and we want to hear from everyone. But the first public comment is specifically related to the agenda items of the IBDP reaccreditation and the capital facilities project. If you have a public comment about those two items before we discuss them as a board, please come down to the podium and make that comment now. Otherwise, we'll ask if you hold your comments until the end. Excellent. Seeing as that there are no public comments about those two agenda items, Dr. Blanch, the floor is yours for the Central Office report.
So, first up, we have some members of our high school here to kind of speak about some pretty exciting news. I'm not going to spoil it or anything, so if you guys would like to come up, one, two, three, four, or five of you, is that great? Or just the two of you? So, I see Mr. Vera coming up. And Ms. Scanlon, thank you very much. Pete, thank you.
What's up? No, I was trying to open my...
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Karen.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. We actually have two things we'd like to discuss, both of which are quite celebratory. First, I'll speak a little bit about what's happened at the middle school in the last week, and then Claire will talk about our high school news. Last week at the middle school, Jeff Getman, Jen Mangone, Janice Catino, and the rest of the SMS faculty and staff hosted an IB NYPD accreditation team who spent two days reviewing the team's progress towards the middle years program accreditation. The team met with teachers, parents, students, administrators, boards of Board of Education members, and staff to learn about how Somers Middle School has begun to implement the middle years program. We want to recognize the amazing work of the SMS team and of their NYPD coordinator, in particular, Janice Catino, who meticulously planned every minute of the visit team's schedule to ensure that they had the opportunity to speak to all members of the learning community, to review curriculum maps and subject group overviews, to observe instruction to our facilities, to evaluate whether or not the IBO would authorize Somers Middle School as an official NYPD school. We anxiously await their formal report, but the verbal debrief was extremely positive. One member of the visit team shared that this is her 67th accreditation visit and that visiting Somers Middle School was, quote, "a dream and a pleasure." She stated that the evidence of our commitment to inclusion is, quote, "everywhere," and that, quote, "you cannot fake it." She also thanked Dr. Blanch and the team for having the vision and putting the right structures in place so that the vision could come to reality. Many thanks are due to Janice Catino, Jeff Getman, Jen Mangone, and the entire Somers Middle School team.
And then for Somers High School. Every five years, an IB-authorized school undergoes a program evaluation conducted by members of the IB organization. The overall effort is to provide a vehicle for schools and the IBO to review and assess the health of a given program. The IB organization conducted their five-year review of Somers High School in September, and last week we received word that the diploma program at Somers High School has been reauthorized for another five years. What fed into this success were the tireless efforts of Allison Scanlon, the faculty, staff, and administration of SHS to make the diploma program a vibrant, successful, and enriching offering for students. For Allison Scanlon, our esteemed diploma program coordinator, preparations for the five-year review began last year by conducting self-study in which all stakeholders were engaged in reflecting on our program, its successes and in areas in need of growth. The self-study is designed to gather input from the entire school community, identify best practices in areas in need of growth, and report the findings to the IBO. In addition to engaging all stakeholders in the self-study, Allison spent countless hours uploading documents and evidence to the IBO to ensure that they were prepared to effectively evaluate our program. Finally, Allison planned a two-and-a-half-day virtual visit and meticulously scheduled meeting times between the review committee and parents, teachers, students, administrators, board members, classroom visits, facilities tours, so that they could assess whether or not we are meeting the expectations of the IBO. Some of their criteria and some of their findings were, in regards to sharing an important mission, they found the governing board and school leaders show a strong commitment to the philosophy of the IB mission. The governing board and school leaders have developed a clear and strong strategy and guiding principles that drive decision-making. For providing essential structures, systems, and resources, they found the school benefits from a leadership and governance that demonstrates a commitment to providing high-quality learning environments. The school coordinator demonstrates a skillful and ongoing commitment -- I lost my place because I smiled at Allison -- to the development of the program in an organized and strategic manner. The school uses data such as recruitment numbers and student family surveys to effectively make decisions regarding school priorities and strategic planning. Professional development is strategic, differentiated, and ongoing, and ensures the teachers have access to and use current and relevant documentation and program resources. For the culture, the school's commitment to educational equity and access to students for all backgrounds and abilities is highly evident. For learning, students are actively involved in their own learning through the personalization and process of choosing courses. The classroom environment and teaching strategies enable every student to pursue and meet their learning goals. For overall requirements based on the program documentation observations of the team during the visit and in conversation with members of the school community, all requirements are in place. Prior to joining SCSD 13 years ago, Dr. Blanch had had experience with IB schools and recognized how well-aligned the SCSD mission, vision, and collective commitments were aligned with IB. Dr. Blanch floated the idea of introducing IB 13 years ago, but this organization wasn't ready for such an undertaking then. A few years later, members of the SHS faculty were inspired by IB training supported by the district. With the support of the high school and the district leadership team, began a feasibility study to determine the viability of implementing a successful DP program here at SHS. Since then, our fledging program has grown into a vibrant and widely respected program that benefits students who choose to do the full DP and students who choose to engage in only in singular course offerings through the IB. The implementation of this program has played an instrumental part in increasing access to high-level courses for all students. Since the inception of the Somers High School Diploma Program, SHS has been recognized as having the most number of high-level course offerings available to students in our region, and we are sixth in our state for those offerings. This, in conjunction with our commitment to guided open enrollment, has increased the number of seats enrolled in high-level courses from 190 to 399 between the years 2012 and 2022, despite declining enrollment. This success is due to Dr. Blanch for having the vision, our administrators for supporting the vision, our teachers who executed the vision, our incredible students who are motivated, interested, and excited about learning every day, and finally to Allison Scanlon who expertly coordinates professional learning, budget, schedules, support, administration, testing, and so much more, all while teaching classes and without whose leadership this would not be possible. So, we present this flag to the high school team, Mark Bayer, Pete Rodriguez, Karime Flores, and we ask that you accept it on behalf of the entire faculty and staff, students and parents who have made DP a success. Congratulations.
Allison, I think you need to get in front of that flag, please.
You want to go towards the middle? Get it, everybody there?
Big, that's a queen-size. Queen-size.
I already took the picture.
King-size.
Can I make one quick comment?
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
I just want to quickly comment that when we did our feasibility study, did the issues get louder? Sorry, I kicked something.
Just you.
We visited many other schools that were diploma program schools, IB schools, and two things that we heard, one is, "Your program will not work if you don't have the right coordinator," Allison, I'm talking about you. And when we asked them about their TOK teacher, specifically at one particular school, kids were bouncing off their seats and couldn't wait to tell us how awesome their TOK teacher is. And that course was the changing, defining thing for those students. And after five years, I can honestly say that we have lucked out at Somers to have not only our coordinator, but our TOK teacher being the same person, and that being Allison Scanlon. She has done an absolutely amazing job, so I would be remiss if I didn't say publicly thank you for everything that you've done.
Hi. Can I comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, I was lucky enough to sit in on the -- these mics did get louder, by the way.
I think it's you, Nick.
Oh. Mark, maybe, not me. So, I was lucky enough to sit in on the NYPD, the evaluation review where we did meet with the evaluators come in, and it was exciting. It was great hearing from their time and that they spent with everybody and learning about it, sitting in the classrooms, talking to students, talking to teachers, you know, and it was refreshing to learn, you know, to kind of what Mark was talking about, the coordinators and how it was implemented from the administration. And they really talked about how Somers did it different, and it was really the bottom, felt bottom-up, which is really, you know, the new way, or it's a good way to go about things as opposed to being forced top-down, right? You tend to get much more buy-in from things and cooperation and collaboration and sense of ownership and pride, and that's really when you really start feeling that impact. And then they went in and talking about, you know, every class they observed, how the students were engaged in learning and offering opportunities for inquiry. A couple of the quotes out of that meeting, "The leadership structure of your team is that of a team that is obviously, obviously how much respected and support for each other," and that's unique that they've seen in this district. They talked about Dr. Blanch, "You are hands-on superintendent," you know, the glue that holds work together, so they complimented you in there. But again, there's a lot of great things that they talked about. I also had a great opportunity in learning a little bit more about the IB programs and the benefits and what they're seeing in their school districts across the country and how they've adopted it and continue to grow it. But again, overall, it was, you know, it's great hearing it from internally, but it's a great validation hearing it from someone that goes and visits, what do they say, 67-plus schools or something like that, and to hear things positive about our implementation of it and our administrative team and district. That was pretty cool to hear, right? And kind of validation for the investment and time that everybody's been putting into it, you know, and showing that success, so nice work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll just go ahead before we head off to next page, just thanking again Allison and the team, and there's roughly 12 teachers, as we talked about before, that had started our journey on here, and so now where we find ourselves to being re-accredited, middle years program just fitting, seeing their accreditation, and also ninth and 10th grade, we hope in the next approximately 24 months or so, we'll get their visit for accreditation there. So, thank you to the leadership of the building, teachers, support staff, the children, everybody for starting this journey almost 10 years ago, because without that starting kind of momentum, we wouldn't be here, so thank you to you all.
So, Ray, I wonder if you could explain for the folks in the audience who maybe aren't familiar with all of the acronyms, the DP, the diploma, what that actually means for our students palpably, what they take away from that diploma, as well as Mr. Bayer was talking about TOK. I wonder, for those of us who don't know all of the acronyms, if somebody might repeat that?
Sure. So, the DP is the Designated Player -- no, I'm sorry. Sorry, wrong thing. So, again, if anyone wants to speak up, but where we started was in the 11th and 12th grade. The diploma program allows a student to go ahead and get a, basically their junior and senior is pretty much fully encapsulated with international baccalaureate courses, or they can so choose to maybe take one or two classes, makes it whether our IB or AP courses as well. What we see from certainly AP courses as well as IB, but that actually gives our students the opportunity to start kind of a little bit ahead of their next collegiate step, so they're often getting either a semester or more credit for when they go to college. It has opened up significant doors that we haven't seen before, and we're also hearing and saying frankly now even more after COVID, and Mark and the team can mention this, is that there's less schools that are looking for testing or test optional, so the value of what universities keep telling us, we know what we receive when a child says they have an IDB diploma, because they understand the depth and the connections across different curricular areas, that that does carry itself a very strong weight, so students have hopefully more choices and options as they move forward with that part, so. And then the TOK is that Theory of Knowledge. It really is a fundamental course that our students take if they are interested in doing the full diploma program, as well as we have some students who are interested in just taking that course. And that's a piece we anticipate with kids coming out of the middle school with some of that in their background, they'll be more interested in accessing some of those curriculum pieces, and that's why the high school team is in there working in partnership with Allison. We have a coordinator at the high school for the middle years program, Erin Stewart, and she is working, as we talked here, with Janice Catino here at the middle school. So, that team of three is a collective piece, looking at six through 10, ultimately will be there with the choice for the DP program at the high school.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again, team.
And then, Ray, one of the, either you, Kevin and Claire, that was in the meeting too, I don't know if one of you could talk to, but the coordinator that was there, the evaluator that was visiting us, she spoke a lot about her county and how the--
Fairfax.
Fairfax, but how different businesses were actually getting involved and liking the students that were coming out of that. Again, I don't do it justice, I don't know if you could talk about it, or someone else just give a--
It's interesting. I had talked to a family recently that had moved from the district, and that was the exact reason they had attracted from overseas. They came here, they were familiar with the International Baccalaureate Program, and when they saw that, that was an attractive piece for the family to be a part of, so we certainly anticipate that that's going to be a magnet.
The magnet thing, yeah. So, then they said that some of the business, the, was it Amazon was one of them, or--
Volkswagen.
Volkswagen, and a couple other ones that--
Google.
Saw that as a magnet and actually were investing in those local--
Absolutely.
--local school districts in order to getting teachers training, because they just saw the value--
And we captured this.
--and getting resources out of it.
Yep. So, good. Absolutely agree. And so, I think at the end of this, that, and I think Mark and the team spoke about, there's a lot of choice and voice for the students to access at the high school level. I know it slipped in there, but the idea about that embedded honors experience allows for the high schools tactically has identified where students can take embedded honors in ninth and 10th grade for humanities really at any period, so allows the richness of this program to stay intact. Many times, New York City schools get a little smaller, things have to give way, but by opening up and removing barriers and gateways, it actually creates a stability to keep the richness of those courses available. And not spoiler alert, but we're looking to bring on possibly a new course at the high school next year to involve some students in our English area that we think we can app some kids to really get involved in a little bit more in depth, so we're looking at that one, bringing that onboard to allow kids, again, a choice, and hopefully we'll even get more students involved in accessing the program.
Great. I know I did go home, and I was telling my kids, "Ray, you signed up for all more IB classes." Stuff, let's go, get on it.
Good to know.
Accomplished.
But, yeah, so I mean, others out there listening, though, I would just encourage make sure that you are talking to your guidance counselors, talking to your kids about looking at more, does--
What IB does for your kid--
What IB does for your kid.
--and how it helps prepare them for the future with interdisciplinary programming.
And I would also say, and the team could reflect on this, is that as we talked as a group, you know, some of us were together, you know, a number of years when I landed here ago, this was a flat-out, specific targeted piece to work on our diversity, equity, and inclusion work, what before it perhaps was where it is today. It was an effort to remove barriers for our children, it was an effort to increase our access to all of our children in our schools. It's fundamentally grounded in being a good global citizen and understanding the global context around all content areas, and so it's really living that experience that the team has been doing for years, and we're excited about taking it to the next piece. So, it is that idea living in practice, and how can we continue to improve that, but that is frankly where that piece came from. So, the middle years program is our next step, and we'll be there soon, so.
All right.
Thanks again, everybody coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, now the good stuff? No, just kidding. So, Chris and I are here just to give a brief update on our facilities project for the athletic piece. So, just want to let you know that we've had a number of different community members that have been on here, so you can, if you can read backwards, you can see on your screen there that we have groups that we met actually starting in last spring, where we started this conversation with the community, and myself and Chris and our athletic director, at the time it was Roma Catalino, and Mark Hatton coming onboard now, and then also our facilities ground director. So, we had support there from the district, talking about our next best hopes, and then Nick was kind enough to be our board liaison in this experience, and then town of Somers and our CISO partners, as well as some parents, and then our booster club members. So, we really tried to get some good insights from the, all different kind of perspectives in the community. And so, if we head to that next slide, you will go ahead and see just in the background some of our work, as I mentioned, sorry, Chris, that we reviewed the needs in particular of our baseball, softball, and tennis programs. We also looked at the needs of some of our physical education and overall facility needs that we're always looking at, just making sure that we can tie it in with our projects as best as we can, as we continually look to making sure the investment the community has made in our schools stays there, and we don't have things kind of getting to disrepair. Also, the programs are identified with priority areas in each, and then we talked about how do we go ahead and look at the refund, kind of the funding of the project. So, I want to just break it out by each group. So, the baseball is an area that we started with, and so the 10th area is to bring on full synthetic turf. We continue to see that we lose many, many games in the springtime, to be frank, because of the weather, practice time, and then that impacts on the interior piece, and so the ability for us to use that synthetic surface will help us in fall as well as spring, and we hope to partner with our CISO group, where that can be now truly another really quality practice place for our younger children and things. And so, I'm always surprised at how much square feet are in a baseball field on the outfield, but there's a lot, so there's a lot of things that can be done to help our younger school, Somers Youth Sports Organization. Simple straight things, foul poles, backstop, but basically updating the entire experience there and looking at some site improvements in relationship to there. The field stays where it is, the field just kind of gets a really clear, fresh update and a refresh and all that good work that we've got. And so, that, you can see that project approximately is about $2.35 million to go ahead and get that work going.
So, that would, you're saying that would increase use of it?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Jed, exactly. Our internal use, frankly, well, it gives us a lot more access to students, because historically now, if it's just too wet to play outside, we'll go try to do it in the gym, even though it's sunny outside, but now we can just be outside, and it's a safer environment, and that was a piece that every team went through. They talked about first from a safety perspective, how can we make sure these are good, safe playing environments for all of our children, and then what opportunities can we look to increase access to those fields and things like that, and then where can our, hopefully our student athletes at least, as best we can, have a parallel playing environment here when they go to other schools in our local community that we play with. So, those are kind of some of the pieces that we look to. So, thank you, Jed.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on to the softball field, and so the softball field, very excited about this piece, is looking at, again, going to full synthetic outfield and infield, foul poles, and backstop fence, and all those good pieces that would go along with there. That piece, again, majority of that, because it's less, the outfield is significantly smaller for a softball field, but that's about 1.7. We hope that even things like primrose, obviously that would be kind of where it is back in there, but if there's the need, the physical education program, once they look at, it's nice, it's too wet to bring the kids real out on the grass and do some things, but they can bring them in the outfield and go out there and be out on the turf and just do some things as a physical education standpoint from our kids, some days when otherwise we'd be kind of in the black topic from familiar with primrose out in the back there. So, once again, hopefully it provides just one more opportunity throughout the school year that helps our softball team clearly, as well as our physical education program at the campus there. And once again, I believe it would be a wonderful experience for our sports use organization to kind of get access and use this as well.
Nice.
And then, maybe for the older folks league, myself, I might be able to hit it over the fence, but I'm not sure if they'll let me out there anymore, so we'll see. That's one. Now, this one, last, whatever, but tennis, as I think we all know, our tennis facilities for the longest period of time have been at Reese Park in partnership with the town, and thank you to that team and their support always of doing everything again to support our kids. One of the things in here is that we are looking now at bringing tennis courts into the high school campus, onto the high school campus proper. And so, with that, as you see in here, it's, you know, new court, we're looking at six courts here for multiple reasons. One, just from the ability to run and host a kind of tournament or matches with other teams, much more expedient than we kind of are currently experiencing, as well as now we can bring in tennis into a guaranteed experience for all of our children through the physical education program at the high school. And by having six, that allows a full class to go out and fully participate at the same time. So, again, if you've got, you know, a class of 24 or so kids, we can get them out there, playing doubles, and get everybody fully involved in that piece. So, whole new experience we just haven't had the opportunity to do at our high school level, so I know our physical education team is extremely, extremely excited about bringing this into the curriculum at the high school.
Also open to the community, Ray?
We'll see. No, I'm just kidding. So, we're going to be a little protective of the tennis courts, just want to be honest. We want to make sure that those tennis courts, honestly, our first step out of this is to see if we can get, I'd like to see if we can get a modified program for tennis at the middle school. So, hope is getting modified built at the middle schools, and then if you have the high school, and then we'll want to make sure that the courts are protected and taken care of, and it's appropriate, just like we do the rest of our fields and stuff like that, so hopefully.
Ray, these courts--
I know where you're going. Are you going to tell me?
No. Guess.
Yeah.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
No. I was going to ask you, what kind of service of the courts?
So, right now, I think the architects are looking at what would be the most appropriate service, and so we haven't got to that level of design at this point in time yet. They'll let us know on pricing.
All right. Right. Second question is the pickleball.
Pickleball.
Because the surface determines whether the possibility of playing pickleball on the tennis court or not.
Which one doesn't work for pickleball?
The town park already learned that lesson. Now, they have been complained, many of the courts that cannot be used by pickleball players.
Hi, they're competitive.
So, take that into consideration, we get more usage out of it.
Not for us. So, there's not competitive pick, whatever, pickleball for the children. So, the children would take the first part first, and then we'll kind of see where it goes. This has been a long wait for our tennis families and our children. To be honest, this was a conversation the board may remember, in the winter of 2019, we started, you know, thinking about this and saying, "Hey, look, we can get it going," and then that spring of 20, everything shut down. So, we're really excited about getting this piece going, so.
For your information, the pickleball population growth--
I heard.
--statistically is, you know, really 10 times more than tennis.
Sleep in the nation.
So, moving on, with the baseball, softball, tennis, you can see the numbers at the bottom with our, with our current number priced at about just short of $5.5 million for that project. On the next page, I did want to add a couple of pieces in here. On any project, we typically look at, identify what are add alternates, so things that if we could do this and the pricing comes into our favor, here are some things that we would suggest we pursue. And kind of these are three of those top ones, is one is getting lights on turf too. Again, getting lights on turf to assist the community, frankly, to assist us, and so some kids can get maybe home a little earlier at night, and we can run some dual events going on at the same time and not waiting for the other field to open up, so it gives us a chance to maybe close the athletics down earlier, and kids can get home and do their work and things, so that's a piece that will be, when we get out for bid, we'll be asking so we can make an informed decision. The next one is the press box at the field, which actually services both fields, because you can see out of both fields for turf one and turf two, we're looking at the remaining life on that press box field, so we'll be asking the engineers to look at that. Is that something we should, is it already extended, you know, beyond its life, or we have years left? And so, that'll help us determine what that looks like, and then that will include any updates if we can look at the bleachers proper themselves. We have to learn more about, you know, they have a lifespan, and where do we set in relation to--
Silly question. You said from that press box, you can see both fields.
Turf one, turf two.
But you wouldn't use the press box for both fields, because theoretically you're using field two, because field one is being used, right?
So, we'll have coaches up there, maybe superintendents are interested in putting in the K-gun in the football team, that will look at at the different fields. So, it is, it's surprisingly used a lot of different ways, in particular, you know, some of the sub-varsity events that it just, it just gives one more perspective to see both of those fields.
Thank you. No idea.
And then, in relationship to this, and at the, kind of the end, we'll look at some of the positioning, but this piece here identifies maintaining lower soccer fields. Right now, you may be familiar, we have two grass fields down in the lower soccer. One of those will need to be repurposed to create our tennis courts. Six tennis courts takes a lot of space, more than I really had anticipated, but you put it on the mat, okay, it doesn't fit where I thought it would fit, and so it fits, and then the option--
But you wouldn't use the press box for both fields because theoretically you're using field two because field one is being used, right?
So we'll have coaches up there. Maybe sit for attendance or interested in putting in the K gun to the football team. That will look at at the different fields. So it is, it's surprisingly used a lot of different ways. In particular. You know, some of the subversity events that it just, it just gives one more perspective to see both of those fields.
Thank you. No idea.
And then in relationship to this and at the, kind of the end, we'll, we'll look at some of the positioning, but. This piece here identifies maintaining lower soccer fields. Right now, you may be familiar with two grass fields down in the lower soccer. One of those. Will need to be repurposed to create their tennis courts. The six tennis courts takes a lot of space. More than I really had anticipated, but you put it on the map, okay, it doesn't fit where I thought it would fit. And so it fits. And then the option there would be, we can talk about it later. Either now or somewhere down the line, you can pivot the existing field and put two, one, two in there. And I'll show you on the deck guy room a little bit later, but. We're going to ask just so we have an understanding about add alternates. The last one in here is the light on three fields. It was certainly a request. Frankly, the estimate of, you know, $3 million, give or take, is well beyond what we could put into a size of a project that in its entirety is $6 million. So. And again, from a perspective for us to use lights on a field that is dedicated to, you know, baseball or tennis or softball. It's a singular loose use piece. It's not like our field sports where we've got. Field hockey on there. We've got girls soccer. We've got boys soccer, girls across, boys across. We've got football. Now we got girls flag football. We've got field hockey. We've got lots, lots of sports, lots of times. So we, that's the reason why it allows us to get lights on turf too. Again, just to. Get all that more usage out there as much so.
Not good, Ray. These, these numbers right now are just estimates, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, for the lights, are we considering solar lights and?
So right now we wouldn't be considering any lights in this project because even with solar, it's still cost prohibitive at this point in time. So that's what I tried to make other was new lights and I just put it at the bottom, say, look, it was talked about. It's just. Down there is a note that we just cannot approach it solo or any, any kind of light piece right now. The only lights would be looking at turf two. If we can get that, that would be a conversation. What does it look like? What is the over cost as well as. Any turf one upgrades. We know some of our school districts around us have upgraded to LED and things like that.
But the only thing I, I mentioned is that some of the solar lights providers, they seem to. Promoting that a self-sustainable or self, you know, the cost is covered. If that's the case, you, you may not have to wait for it because these subsidy programs may or may not last forever.
And I'm glad you brought that up. Point Chris has contacted our, our team with their energy performance contract we're doing now. And they're coming back and reassessing the district once again, because as we all know, our home and our district cost kilowatt hours has significantly jumped. So they're going to come back and look again, because the first piece was look, your kilowatt hour cost is, is very low. You're not going to get it. Now they're going to come back and, and see what they find. So we'll, we'll be asking them to do again, another once around on. Any value in looking at solar for energy performance contract the second time around with the pretty significant increase in our, our cost per kilowatt hour. The next page is just kind of a summary here is looking at project revenue minus the expenditure and looking at our balance. So currently, right now, we have just around 4.4 million. In that capital reserve. That reminder again was established by the community last May and supported. And then we anticipate a transfer this February to get that number to about $6 million. You see the number right below there. The current cost of the project is anticipated at just short of 5.5. So in essence, if we did the project itself, we put in there, you'd have about $550,000 available. To perhaps get after other items or handle other, you know, past inflationary costs. What we would suggest is there's a designated alt, add alternates. If we took all three of them. New lights, press box and maintaining that low grass field, we're about $700,000 short. And so that's if you took them all. So it's going to be when the pricing comes in, goes out to bid, what's the best price we get? What's the cost of doing this business then? Then we'll be able to make the determination, but kind of above their other alternatives, you saw the list of all the things that are coming. Can we get after turf two lights? Then can we get after the press box? Then ultimately, would we want to be able to pivot that soccer field to maintain it? Can always get it later. We're not losing the land. It's just a matter, it has to be restructured.
So you're presenting to us the priorities and the order in which you'll be funding them.
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
And we'll come back to the board, obviously, as we get to the bidding process and go from there.
Ray, I was going to say, I think this might be a good time to kind of go over. Where this money, I know it was established in the capital reserve fund, but for the benefit of the public to just explain that this is not money that was borrowed or raised. This was money that was existing that we put into this account and that they will have to vote again in May to support this project if we were to take any money out of the account.
Perfect.
Correct?
Yep. And so Chris will hit the next slide and I'll walk through it on the front side, exactly. Before the project design is that first slide where we're at is we worked with that, the committee that I mentioned before. We asked the board to allow us to put on the ballot to have our community allow us to establish such a. Capital plan for this specific purpose, permanent schools. And so we had the approval of that. Now. We've been able to go ahead and start putting funds into that savings account. And we will ask again this May to ask for the voter approval, say, can we take those funds out and start doing this project specifically? No increase on the existing taxes. It's just allowing us to use our savings to make this thing happen. So I'll start with the project design. Right now we're looking in not too far down the road, about a 30% design of the project from the engineers. In December and then in January, we're shooting for hopefully a 90% identified project scoped out there. You may have seen. We are having our, our grounds surveys being completed right now by the architect team to get the survey working. So. If you see folks out there with that work, you'll, that's what they're doing. The next one is our submittal to the state. Our target still here is to get this to the state as soon as we can. We're looking towards the middle to end of February. That's going to be the key pieces from the state. How fast do they get us back the information? So we want to get it to them as soon as we can, February. Then in May, as you were saying there before, amend to May 16th in 2023, that's when we will ask. The request of the community to allow us to approve the capital project purposes. And then right after there, we hope, we get approval from SED. It's probably not going to happen, just want to let you know, but we want to be prepared. They've got it. We got, we can't get approval until we, the community says yes. We could technically say, look, we'll stamp it. It's going to be in their ballpark and saying, look, and their, their court, their pickleball court. And they're going to go ahead and say, I got you. And they're going to go ahead and tell us when they're going to let us give us approval. Our hope is, go ahead, Chris.
The, the amount of time that SED takes to approve these projects varies from day to day. Depending on the amount of projects that have been submitted. So currently the, the queue that they call it is somewhere around 16 to 26 weeks. Which at that point then, according to this timeline, we wouldn't be hitting this May 17th date for approval. Which would then push back everything a little bit. But again, we'll be at the mercy of SED and how quickly they will approve the project.
That's Somers Engineering Department, right?
Impact your schedule, but I want to suggest one more item that may impact this schedule. That is when you do the landscape of doing all these sports stuff, you could consider to build some cross-country trail. Because, you know, it looks like, I look at the pictures and all, you're going to level a lot of field out there. If you have architect to keep that in mind to provide, you know, cross-country trail for winter sports.
So two things, if a one.
Be very, very beneficial.
Sure. So two things. One, there's, we intentionally try to stay away from doing as little as we could on moving ground. That's why we have to take over the space. The second.
Have to. I mean, six courts of tennis.
I will show you. It's very minimal, very minimal. Next slide. The second piece is though we are projecting, we desire to, and as I mentioned, the board table, we anticipate approximately two years from this May will be our next bond. We absolutely desire to enhance and improve our cross-country. Existing trail, which is pretty good, but we definitely want to increase and enhance that. So that will be coming. So absolutely right. And that's a part where you saw just to pivot the field, the fields was like almost half a million dollars. It's anytime you touch that. The pavement, the, the earth there and you call it earth movement is costing. So it, once we'll get it, like Chris said, we'll start the project. When we go out for bid project and award, that's going to tell us our pricing. Then we'll say, where do we, how deep do we get into our, our kind of add alternate list? And then the completion part there is we would be looking at substantial completion of August 24, 20. There. So that from this upcoming summer, it's intended to be a quick moving project once we get it started. So again, tennis, we already know we're off grounds to do the tennis. So there's no impact. The only thing is just additive. Once we get it going, we can just jump in. Baseball and softball will do our best to hopefully we can not impact those spring season. It's going to come down to the schedule. Town will, as they already said and have always said, they'll work with us if we need to use those fields to compete for one spring season. We won't know that until we figure out when the state's going to approve. We hope to close that out in September of the 24, 25 school years. We start the activities in that school year. So that's, we'll give you more updates on that. And then just the high level visual in here that Chris has got here. You can see the first page here is the. High school, so baseball, basically, you know, very exciting, but everything is new. We've got new turf, new fence, new batting cages, all that stuff, nicer bleachers and seats and things like that. Turf two, if we can get those lights, that's where you'll see those and to the right. You'll see our existing field. You will see over to the far right, as Chris has there, you'll see. At the bottom, those are the six tennis courts that sit atop the current existing soccer field. You will notice a little bit. On the south end of there that there's a new ADA accessibility kind of path that needs to be brought into the tennis courts and. A little bit of new paving. So that's just a little bit easier accessibility in there. So that's a part of the six courts that we'd be looking at. PE as well as our athletics program. Above there, Chris, I don't know if you can, you can blow up on that one a little bit. You should be able to see the, on the left-hand side there on the west side, there's a dirt kind of a piece there. That's like the existing border, relatively the existing border of the current field. And so you can see where underneath there, but you should be able to see two black lines there that there's two fields pivoted side by side. So you can see it's what it does is it bumps it out. That does cause us to go into, to a little bit of the wooded area. Getting into the woods, clearing, building a little retaining wall. That's, that's where the dollars start coming in. There's space there to do it. Just let the board know there's space to pivot, add two. Or create one out of the two and then the soccer field. So worse comes if we lose one. Don't, bless you. Do not forget about the synthetic surface that we will have now for the baseball field that can be used throughout the fall for practices and that stuff. As well as in the spring when baseball's not using it. So in essence, we're gaining. A lot of square footage that can be used anytime and anytime, as long as it's safe for kids to go out and play. And we can always come back and spin those.
So even more usable space while the project is being done, correct? Is that?
Once we get the turf and that's when the usable space comes in.
Right. Nice. Thank you.
And then on the last page there is just over to, again, it's initial piece, what we're looking and asking the architects to do, if you're familiar with that space. Is just hooking a little bit to the right there and tucking a little bit back in that corner. So we can. Get, leave the grass area as much as we can for any, any activities for the school or high school to come over. And then also looking at using that space for again, physical education. So kids can go out, you can see the black top there. It, it's a lot nicer for kids, the young guys to go out and kind of do whatever they're doing, physical education. Probably put some, you know, gates out in the outfield. So it's easy accessibility and stuff. And they come right off the gym there as you can see where the gymnasium is. So. So that's kind of where we stand right now. We've got those plans coming hopefully in December 30%, January 90%. And we'll see what that looks like. We'll understand a little bit better of what timeline and projects are. We hope because there's no HVAC, that you're not really talking about heavy electrical pieces in here and it's just a hopefully more straightforward, a little bit simpler project. So we do hope we can go through a little faster. But we will, we'll be at the mercy there a little bit, but. Full steam ahead and just want to let you know. Thanks for all the questions along the way and stuff like that. So.
Well, it's exciting. Thank you.
Chad, you had a question, no? You looked like you were going to ask a question before.
No, I've just said it's exciting.
Okay.
Exciting.
It is. It's the. Thank you for, yeah, I mean, I know there's a lot of involvement in figuring out the needs and, and making sure that it beats it.
No, it's been good. And I think the, the community involvement's been, been good and reasonable, right? It hasn't been. Everybody's been respectful. Yeah, we only need this much, whatever, but it's not. Haven't, I expected a little bit of a land grab from each sport on it, but it wasn't the case. Everybody was kind of.
It was awesome.
Yeah, it was good. It was good collaboration. You know, we, we probably need that more, you know, baseball, you know, we probably need this more and that would be more helpful here. Yeah, we spent on another sport.
How well represented is pickleball? That's what I want to know.
No, I think we welcome more. People, people come in to watch the expense because I think. This is not a small change. I think more people participate, have good ideas, probably will give us. Savings or cost effectiveness.
So one, one thing to take account is when we do look at this and when I notice that, you know, other districts, you know, the asset is not just being used for just high school sports. Right? The fact that we do have, and not many schools have the partnership with, you know, their CISO or the youth program, which includes all of our kids from K. You know, through eighth grade, right? And then they roll on or seventh and eighth grade modified, but you know, and then plus the, the, the high school or the upper grade sports and athletics that we provide within the district. But the fact that we're continuously using these assets and these fields are pretty much used. From, you know, day from during the school, you know, after school by the high school teams and immediately after by CISO programs, whether it's. Boys football, girls football, softball, this, that, right? And, and like Ray said, the, the baseball fields and the, the softball fields being, you know, turfed on now offer. A little bit more multi-use capability on it. So other teams can get on that if they're. You know, we're going a little bit long or there's some games on the turf one and turf two. So again, we definitely as a community get use out of it and it's not underutilized. You know, and I do also like as a community feel for kids and for sports, you know. Somers is a little bit of an athletic town, right? We do like our sports, but yeah, I, I think part of that connected fabric and. Kids walking on for the youth sports and seeing the high school kids walk off. I think that's unique and that's what makes us different, right? And that's what makes, you know, that community, the kids want to stay, you know, we do. Continuously have, you know, I know the boys sports more, but you know, but, you know, the flag football program is massive for the girls. Right? I, I know our football program, we continuously, you know, I go to games and, you know, I have 35 kids on my team and there's 18, 19, you know, between others. And similar sized school districts, lacrosse program, you know, we have three youth teams on a grade. Where we have like 67 kids. Girls, field hockey is now starting up too, right? And I do believe strongly that, that how we do that and get more kids active, you know, has to do with that connection there. So I, I think it's important and I, I don't think it's going to be a underli- utilized asset as we do invest in this.
Thank you. And just as we head off of this one, and thanks for projecting there, Chris. Just thinking again about that, there was always the next project about the next bonding project. That's where we hope to then really. Be looking at some of the things we've talked about of some of the straightforward just maintenance of. Some of our paving and some of our concrete work and some of the roof work that we have to do, but then also going back into some of our original. Building stuff from 68 or 69 and replacing roofing and replacing some classrooms. So it really is a. More engaging and connected and flexible learning environment for our children. And it gives us also a chance to go back into some of our art spaces. Performing our visual, our musical arts areas. It gives us a chance to go back into some of those areas and look at. How can we create those spaces for kids who connect so much through the arts program and say, we did a little bit with our last project. We had some nice new sound improvements at the high school and things like that. But there's some really nice things that hopefully we can go back in there. We have a wonderful, you know, performing arts program with our, with our musicals. That we have every spring and literally the hundreds of kids that are involved at this campus. They have I think two or three different, you know, different sets that come in or different casts that come in. So. It will give us an opportunity and it's all back to that district submission piece about engaging all kids. So this one. Isn't intended to engage, and then we got to, how do we engage all these students? So what are the other things that we could possibly put in our schools experiences? Evidenced by the IB conversation tonight to engage our learners in, you know, their mind, body and spirit in the schools. And so. This is a direct connection to that work. So again, thanks to the board for, over the last few years. I know we had a kind of a pause on this one, but I'm. Very excited. We're getting there now and providing this to our community and definitely I know some of our, our youth children are interested. I. A, a, a young lady who is a softball expert at Primrose has let me know that she would like to see the plans. So I will be there in a few. A few weeks when I get the first set of plans of visiting her classroom. So we can get her insights on how those plans look like for the softball field. So looking very forward to that. So thanks.
Very excellent. Wow.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yep, thank you.
Excellent. So ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment section of our meeting, emphasis on the comment. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period. We have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and their issues. As well as their celebrations and the wonderful things that they'd like to share. So having said that, please know that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. It's because we take those concerns and comments seriously. And we need to take the time and we want to have sufficient time to process, research the issues and then respond. We will respond to your, your comments at a future meeting or have the appropriate staff respond to those comments. I want to point out that under the state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain comments about personnel. Please know we take personnel questions or comments rather seriously. But would ask that you go through the appropriate channels, which are sending a direct email specifically to the building level administrator, district or superintendent. And, you know, we want to recognize that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. But we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students, our children who are here, who are watching. That our school board meetings can, and our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner. And demonstrate mutual respect for one another. That's all right. Keep the lights off.
Last call, last call.
So again, in that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility. And respect for divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers address their comments to the board, directly to the board and not to the audience. We will have a maximum of 30. will have a maximum of 30 minutes, limited to three minutes per speaker. We will hold to that three minutes. I believe I have a timer helping me out here. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk. Again, reminding you, under state and federal privacy laws, we may not, under any circumstance, direct comments at specific personnel by name or any foreign factor in which they can be readily identified. I would like to publicly apologize for any of our personnel here on our staff, on our faculty, on our administrative team, whose names have been used in public and have not, should never have been. So, starting from right this very moment, if personnel are named in a way that makes those individuals identifiable during public comments, we are going to stop the meeting until we can maintain order. So again, community members who wish to make a public comment, please write your name and your email, as well as the school your child attends, on that piece of paper down at the, at the bottom. We will get back to you, and we appreciate your comments.
So, I will, yeah, I know you covered it. I just echo that statement. Again, no names are to be used. You could talk about, you know, directions, policies, or whatever you're seeing in the school, or whatever it might be, but no names of teachers, administrators, board members, or anything like that. We will hold strong to that. Appreciate everybody, you know, following along with the rules. Again, three minutes, I will hold that. To be respectful of time, I don't like cutting you off last minute. I will raise my hand to signal you have about 30 seconds left, just so you know you can wrap up and get your final points in. Again, this is to ensure that everybody has time. One other thing, you cannot delegate your time to somebody else. You get one instance to talk.
Thank you.
All right.
Wait, Ken, can we do this? My name is Sasha Cerise Zaberto. I'm a senior at Somers High School. I started Somers in kindergarten. I'm a part of our special ed, ed program. I love our town, my friends, and teachers. When I started in Somers, there was little inclusion, and I did not spend very much time at all with my typical peers. This changed by the time that I was in third grade. I started to spend a lot of more time in mainstream classes. Sometimes there were issues with other kids. In this way, they spoke to me, they looked at me, and they treated me. There were not, they were not used to spending so much time with someone they considered different, and there was days that were really hard. Starting in fourth grade, my mom would visit all the classrooms. The first month of school, she would talk about my disability, Williams syndrome, and in the ways that I am both different and the same as other kids. Part of these discussions included asking the kids to think about some of the ways they may feel uncomfortable being around someone who seems different. We talked about some of the assumptions that were made because of my disability, and how kids need to think about their words and actions to be kind. These were hard conversations for everyone. The truth is, some kids were using terrible words to describe people with disabilities, and there was no way of addressing this, I know, I know, of not addressing this if we were going to change my experience in school. With the support of my teachers and the district, these conversations made a huge impact. Nobody ever complained they were being labeled or, or a hater, or worse. It was a time to explore the fact that not everyone learns how to treat people with respect at home. It had happened at school. If fourth grade can handle these discussions without anyone getting angry or feeling targeted, I think there is a way to have a discussion about race in our classroom where everyone feels comfortable. Dr. Blanch, I would like to thank you, since I'm graduating this year. You gave a presentation a few years ago about inclusion and especially education that would include work done by Syracuse University and their commitment to equality and inclusion for everyone. I hope to attend Syracuse this fall, something my family never thought could happen to me. God bless Somers and our schools!
Thank you, Sasha. Thank you so much for your comments.
Wow. I'm glad I'm following up that talk with my son's words and not mine. I'm here on behalf of...
Sorry, your name, please?
Oh, sorry, Karen Sullivan. I'm, I'm here on behalf of a graduated senior, graduated student from Somers High School, my son, John Sullivan, who many of you know as Jack. To the Somers Board of Ed and concerned parties, my name is Jack Sullivan. I was a student of Somers Public Schools from fall 2004 until spring 2016, when I graduated Somers High School. Over the course of my 13 years, I had the tremendous opportunity to learn from Somers teachers, a group of educators that I know to be exemplary. Almost universally, Somers teachers were determined to raise not only better students, but better people. Themes and goals evolved over those 13 years in most every subject. Somers teachers continue to introduce the best thinking of our time. I'm sure this comes as no surprise, but our teachers do not restrict their obligation to skill-building. They routinely float high-level questions on career, family, hobbies, life at home, and so on. They provide counsel to students. They express empathy, and they care about the holistic well-being of their students. I believe they cherish the responsibility. Without several teachers at Somers High School, I would not have my job in editorial design at The Athletic and New York Times Company, just six years later. I grew up in Somers and lived there most of my life. Somers is home. I want to make something abundantly clear, as someone who gets to say Somers represents the majority of my life experience. Somers has a problem that needs to be discussed. This town is overwhelmingly, almost 90% white, and not representative of college towns, populated cities, or the nation at large. Any parent who thinks their children are ready to immerse themselves in a new community after graduating Somers is terribly mistaken. My experience growing up was filled with commonplace racial social slurs, ridicule of neurodivergent classmates, acts of antisemitism, ethnocentrism, racism, and homophobia. I'm ashamed to say I was not always innocent, and have regrets about my lack of understanding or compassion for those from whom I was different. I know I was not the only Somers graduate of my class to leave Somers and then learn crucial life lessons the hard way.
30 seconds.
Elements of Dr. Blanch's response to this issue have been concerning, and I do not believe that his actions have consequences...
Please don't call out anybody by name.
Sorry. I, I will skip. I fully recognize that we are not privy to all aspects of what occurred. However, to hear that a teacher was challenged mid-lesson over a reading exercise feels absurd. The messaging of our community on this issue has also been both reactive and confusing. It's been clumsy and arguably damaging. Would it be surprising to hear that Somers teachers now fear the future of their curriculum, and that their efforts to promote classroom conversation may be met with a reflexive and almost prosecutorial tone?
Time is up.
Okay. He does thank the board. He understands these are very difficult times. I will give you the complete letter.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I apologize. I don't...
Thank you for your statement. No. No need to apologize. We appreciate your comment.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent and members of the board.
Would you please say your name?
My name is Irene Rada, and I'm here to address the recent issues of the teacher and her teaching the subject of white privilege in our high school, and the subsequent reaction of the community. When I first moved to Somers, I was taken by the woods, the water, and the beauty of this place. I grew up in Pleasantville and had an idyllic childhood. I never really thought of what it was like to grow up feeling different, feeling that I did not belong. I never knew that reality. I was white. I was comfortably middle-class. When my husband, born in Morocco, a brown man, a Muslim, said to me at our first visit to Reese Park, when he said to me, "It's so white here," I thought, "It's okay. You're okay. Everyone is going to love you as I love you." I thought, "How could it be any other way?" Over the years, I experienced the other way. I've seen little Asian kids in my own neighborhood, tormented to the point they couldn't take the bus. I've seen black kids, strong and confident toddlers, grow quiet and unsure in our schools. I've heard of Indian kids in my son's class being called and reduced to the nickname Hindu. I've heard of my Jewish friends, hurt and saddened by the painting of swastikas on buses in the night. We not, we need to stop thinking about... We need to stop thinking about what our white, comfortable experience has been, and instead put ourselves in the shoes of our brown, black, Asian, Latino, and other neighbors who might feel different, who may feel that they don't belong. Then maybe we can become a loving community.
30 seconds.
Kudos to our Somers schools and the D, the adoption of the DEI curriculum, and to its dedication to addressing the challenges of race and diversity in our community. Thank you.
My name is Jack.
How do we have mic?
Court. Court. Check, check. Can y'all hear me? My name is Joshua Brittingham, and I have been in this area for about seven years now. And like the previous speakers have said, there is something amiss in this school district and in, and in this area. And one of the solutions, I think, can help us all to become more compassionate about where we are and who we are and where we came from, is through history. History, I believe, is the thing, true history, I mean, is the thing that can give us a common ground. No one in this country came here on their own. Most people who came to the country during the manifest destiny came here because they were not doing well where they were living. The only people who came here who did not say, "I want to go to America," are black slaves. But we have to understand and teach what history really is. Tell the truth about what this country is, and not be ashamed of it. Because shame is the thing that's going to hurt us, and it's going to continue to hurt our children. We should not be afraid to talk about slavery. We should not be afraid to talk about the rights that other people have over other people that are brown, because it is true. I live well, but I still am chased down by the current police force in this town. I've had them standing outside of my door. I've had them come to, into my yard and ask me if I live here. And I have to go and get my white wife to tell them that yes, he does live here, and he's an artist, and if you want to see his gallery, you can come inside, and I will talk to you about the paintings. Two years ago, when I was at Reese Park, and I spoke there, and I heard some of the brown children talk about things that I experienced when I was growing up in the South. These things are real. And I hope that history, teaching true history all over the world, because there's no people in the world that has not done something else to another people, nowhere. Not in South Africa, not in Zimbabwe, not in France, not in India. I've been to a lot of countries.
30 seconds.
And we have to understand that for our future, to be better, we need to tell the truth about who and what we are, that we can make a difference for our future. And these children need to know, by any means possible.
Hi, I'm Leah Sofka. I'm 15 years old. I've been in the Somers Central Schools, School District all my life. To preface, I'd like to thank the administration for allowing me to speak today. As this is my own education, I feel my peers and my opinions are, if not the most, are one of the, if not the most important to be heard. This is our education, our life, our future. Education gives us an opportunity to make our own decision based on the knowledge we just, we receive, is it not? Secondly, learning about racism in my personal experience has never brought me shame for the color of my skin, rather empathy for others less fortunate than I. In fourth grade, my teacher played a video on Martin Luther King Jr. After seeing the horrendous treatment towards people of color in the 1960s, I began to cry. I was escorted out of the class to calm myself. I was not crying out of shame for the color of my skin. In fact, that never crossed my mind. I was crying due to the empathy I felt and the shocking disbelief that another human could treat another human with such blatant disrespect. I grew up with that empathy and learned to treat others with respect regardless of gender identity, religion, sexual orientation, or race. It is absurd to take away racial injustices from the curriculum. We are the future of this country. If we do not learn the sense of empathy, I just don't know how we're supposed to socially progress as a nation.
Thank you for your comment, Leah.
Good evening, Jonathan Harwood. I, I want to say that, before I say what I was prepared to say, I'm actually more encouraged and more hopeful about this town and the, the views of this town from being here tonight and hearing these eloquent speakers from, from all age groups and all levels. So it's, it's a, it's, I'm, I'm, go ahead. Thank you. So I'm, for that reason alone, I'm glad I came tonight. But having said that, and I want to, I guess, reiterate, if anybody thinks that issues of DEI subject matter are not important, they're sadly mistaken. if anybody thinks that issues of DEI subject matter are not important, they're sadly mistaken. And if you think it's not part of a well-rounded and full educational process, you're sadly mistaken. And if you don't think it's important for this town in particular, it's a mistake. And I can tell you from my own experience, I have two children who graduated from the schools here, both of whom, three grades apart, individually experienced, repeated experiences of antisemitism. During the time they were in school here, there were, as somebody mentioned already, swastikas painted on buses. There was an incident with an athlete in town yelling racial slurs at athletes from other schools that had come here for a track meet. So this is a problem, and it's a continuing problem. And it needs to be addressed, and the way you address it is through education and through learning how to navigate those or get beyond those prejudices and those issues. And I can tell you, it's also important it's important to have, to understand for when you go out into the real world, outside of the schools, outside of this town, outside into the rest of the world. And I can tell you from my own experience as an attorney, dealing with clients who demand that our firm and all of their clients show a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And if you don't do it, you're not going to get the business. So if you want to look at it from a purely selfish, self-interested viewpoint, there it is for you. And if you don't learn these issues, and you don't learn how to deal with them, and you don't learn how to overcome them, it's going to be a problem as you move on in life. And that's why it's important to learn about these things and teach them in the school system. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Cody. I have lived in Somers for 51 years. My children went through the schools here. My nine grandchildren all live in communities nearby. I've spent most of my adult life here in Somers. And during that time, I have committed myself to the service of this community. From when my children were in Primrose, I served on the PTM board and ran the volunteer program at Primrose in the library. So I've I've been doing this for a long time. And so I'm representing Race Amity of Northern Westchester in Putnam, which is my latest endeavor. I'm a founding member of that organization. We are a community organization. We are dedicated not only to studying the subject of racism, which has been America's original sin, but also to creating friendships. Race Amity, after all, friendship is in our name. To creating friendships through also studying the parallel tradition, so to speak, of race amity, of friendships across all lines of gender, of race, of religion, et cetera. And I want to second pretty much everything that's been said before I came up. But also to offer our community organization as a resource, as a partner. We meet every month. We meet once a month to discuss and explore and educate ourselves on these issues. And we are here offering our services to support not only the DEI efforts of the school, but to perhaps offer some way of paralleling those efforts in the community at large. And that's my message.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jet Sofka. I am Jewish, 17, and a member of the LGBT community, and I'm a senior at Somers High School. I have lived in Somers my entire life. I went through Primrose Intermediate Middle School, and I'm about to I'm about to finish high school. As a kid who grew up in the Somers Central School District, trust me when I tell you that we do need a DEI program. When I was in SIS, everything started to go south. By the time I left intermediate school, I've been given the N-word talk because a kid said the N-word to another kid. The buses were spray painted with swastikas, and the high school was threatened to be shot up. And there was also bomb threats, but... However, it didn't start to get really dark until middle school, when my antisemitism experiences have started to kick off. Me and my friends have heard a total of death to all Jews, all Jews should have been killed in the Holocaust. And in eighth grade, in the Holocaust museum, I was laughed at for crying because of all of the photos of people who were suffering. And I still remember my friends going to the Hebrew school teacher for her to tell us that this has happened before at Somers. In my high school life, I've been called the F-slur on multiple occasions, the T-slur. I've been barked at, harassed, purposefully misgendered, and had a kid play Ben Shapiro next to me while I was, while trying to debate science facts with me. While in high school, my junior year, we were told to read the book Night by Ali Wiesel. That is when people started to slow down with antisemitism. It made me wonder how kids in Germany were told to think about the Holocaust. Their education started when they were in fifth grade. They continued their education through expanding their knowledge, including taking the kids to visit concentration camps and teaching them what was, how it's the right side and then the wrong side, the right side, wrong side, and how to avoid that in the future. And they were also told to read books. I was in fifth grade when I started to learn about the Holocaust in my Hebrew school, and I also read Anne Frank's Diary in fifth grade. Yeah. If we started learning about racism and all that at a younger age, we should be able to eliminate others feeling like they don't belong in Somers, making the community more accepting and a safer environment.
Hi, I'm Farrah Chaconia. So it's kind of awkward. I don't have like a speech or anything, but... So I moved here when I was in fourth grade. So I was nine years old, and I moved from Paris, actually. My dad still lives there. I am half-white and half-black. I live with my white mother. Hi, Mom. And so obviously, moving here in fourth grade, I well, I moved here from a very diverse area. So even coming here in fourth grade, I didn't give much thought to the lack of diversity in the school. It then became more apparent to me as I grew older. However, when I first moved here, I really didn't notice anyone treating me any differently because of the way that I look or because of the color of my skin. Growing up, going to sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, middle school, high school, obviously, I think we've all, you know, heard the slurs, whether that be, you know, about race or about like, you know. Sorry, I'm like blanking. Well, obviously, there's a lot of, you know, injustices that, you know, are told and are I'm like, I feel like an idiot. Sorry. I'm like completely blanking. Sorry. So obviously, there's, you know, homophobic slurs. However, I don't necessarily think that there is a homophobia or a homophobic problem or race. I think it's just ignorance. There is so much ignorance in the school and in this country. And I think it's just it's starting on how you're taught. And my mother always taught me to just be open-minded and just, you know, accept everyone for who they are. And I don't think that anyone or everyone necessarily got that opportunity or that upbringing. And I think that's a lot of what we're seeing now. And there's a lot of debate right now that's going on, and it's kind of tearing our town apart. And I think that really emphasizes how immature, I'm sorry, but immature everyone is being. I think it's a little ridiculous that even in this entire country, how divided we are, instead of coming together and just really thinking about what's important, you know, I just, that's it. I don't know.
That is a lot of steps. Holy. Anyways. Hi, my name is Gabrielle Larikiza. Some people know me as B. Hi. I am a sophomore at Somers High School, and I moved here last year, actually, from the Lakeland Central School District. It was crazy how like I moved from Lakeland, which is 15 minutes away, which still has a very high white population over there. But I moved here and I saw a little of my community here. And while that wasn't an issue, I definitely saw an issue in the way people treated me and people reacted to me coming here. I'm Latina. My mom is Puerto Rican, and my dad is Ecuadorian. And when I moved here, in one of my classes, I was called a monkey. People pointed out the hair on my body and the tan of my skin. And as I talked with other students, people had told me stories of this one person who lined up all the people of color next to white people, made the people of color flip their palms and compared the skin tones of the palm and the people of lighter complexion, saying, "This is what skin color you should be." None of this is okay, as, you know, the reactions around the room have proved. And while racism can either be very apparent like that, it can come in subtlety and microaggressions and other things like that. And I think educating our students and the people around us on what things like this can be like and how this takes effect into the real world is incredibly important. I ended up having to move out of that art class, and I was placed into a different art class in which that teacher was a lot more forgiving, and I ended up telling her about my situation. And I ended up having a very open conversation with that teacher, and she ended up apologizing to me about everything I went through. And through that conversation, not only did she learn a lot, but I also learned a lot on what it's like from the white perspective to see your community treat other people so differently and so horrifically. And like another girl who came up in here had said, "It's not from an individual point of one case of homophobia, and it looks like this, and it's this apparent. It's a commutative lack of awareness, and it's ignorance. And the way we cure ignorance is through education, which is what schooling is all about." Now, after that incident, I have multiple students come up to me. I've made so many friends since then, and so many strong people have been there to support me and talk to me ever since. And I've met so many other strong people around the building who I see a lot of myself in. For example, Señora Flores. Hola. And it's just so nice to see an upbringing in my community and seeing them in places of power whenever situations like that happen to me. But it's also very hurtful whenever I see teachers trying to bring this up in a classroom, and then nothing but punishment is brought upon them, and I see a downturn in the classroom, and that teacher isn't allowed to teach anymore. Classes get pushed behind. And it almost treats as if this topic of white privilege and white fragility is something dangerous, is something we should be afraid of, and is something to villainize the white population when it is not. It's what the lesson was trying to teach.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry. No, you're fine. What the lesson was trying to teach is what the book and the lesson was trying to surround about, which was, "You are not guilty for being white, but you have to be aware of your privilege above people of color and how you don't have to see the world how I see it, but I want you to see how I see it. I want you to empathize with me, put yourself in my shoes, and then, and that help me. I want you to uplift me, and I want you to uplift the people around you." Thank you for your time, and thank you for everything.
Hi, I'm Jackie Chaconia. I'm Farrah's mom. Hi, Farrah. As my daughter mentioned, we moved here in 2015 from Paris, France. So not only is she obviously a child who has a little brown skin, she also did not speak English. So there were many opportunities for kids to potentially tease my child or my son as well, because my son also went through the school. And I just want to applaud all of the schools because as far as our experiences, they had a fantastic experience. They were very included. The teachers really helped my children learn to speak English, to write in English, which they did not do when we moved here. So while potentially they could have had a very bad experience, and I'm sorry for any child who has a bad experience, I wouldn't chalk that up to the school per se. So my words are to say to parents in this community, the school, I think you do a great job of trying to include. I work in this school with special education department. I see how inclusive this school has become, especially since I graduated here in 1987, and it was not an inclusive environment at all. So today, the school, I feel, is very different, very inclusive. That is certainly the experience that we've had. My voice is to the parents, who you all need to teach your children a little something about inclusion and about diversity. You need to get out of Somers and go meet people of color, maybe, if you don't know someone of color. Maybe make friends with someone who has a different, you know...
Can you address the board? This is, I'm sorry. Sorry. We appreciate your comments. Just please address the board.
Yes. So parents.
We're parents.
You need to, yeah. So everybody needs to learn a little something about other people. The school, I think, you're doing as good a job as you can do. I think it's not a good thing to put one group down, to lift another group up, no matter what that group is. And just, everyone just needs to remember that this is one community among a country, you know, and you know, you're doing what you can. So I want to applaud the school. Parents, please just think about your role in this as well.
Hello. My name is Jordan Feldman. I am a graduate of Somers High School, and I'm also a teacher. Before I begin, I have two letters. I'm only going to read one. It's on behalf of 400, over 400 alumni of Somers High School. The other letter is my personal letter. I'd like it to be given to the board, and I hope I have your word that it will be read.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'll wait for instruction about that process. So, like I said, I'm a Somers High School graduate and also a teacher. In response to the recent controversy over the 10th grade English curriculum, a group of alumni penned a letter to the Board of Education. On behalf of over 400 alumni who signed this letter and are ready to enter this critical conversation, I would like to read it. So, "Dear Board of Education, we are writing to you on behalf of alumni of Somers High School out of concern for the future of our hometown, the people in it, and its contribution to the world at large, the manner in which the district, particularly our superintendent, has handled..."
Please don't don't call out individuals.
Even by title. That's not the individual.
As long as you can identify the individual, we're asking that you not use those terms, if you can speak broadly.
Okay. Not even by title, then. Okay.
Or any way that you can identify.
Idol teachers or anybody, identify anybody here.
Okay. So as the controversy has been handled over the teacher's use of mean white supremacy by Leila Saad in her 10th grade English class has been disturbing for us to witness and cause for us to reach out to you directly. First, to remove a teacher from her classroom for raising a nuanced political issue with her students sends a message to the entire school that addressing the reality of white supremacy and institutional racism will result in censorship and punishment, you are preventing her from doing her job and creating an environment of fear, silence, and complicity. Furthermore, contacting Somers families with a letter that villainizes the teacher puts the teacher in danger and displays the district's severe lack of support for the teachers it employs. Second, justifying the removal of the text by saying the material is not, quote, "age-appropriate," end quote. By 10th grade, we had been asked by our teachers to read stories about the Holocaust, slavery, rape, murder, and much more. How is a book that guides readers on a journey to look at their own life experiences and examine their place in society not age-appropriate? Even more, a young reader's edition of this book exists specifically for 10- to 16-year-old readers. If age appropriateness was truly the issue in this conversation, using the young reader's edition in the classroom would solve the problem. It feels very much like the reasoning provided was a scapegoat for the real problem that some parents have with the text, which is the anti-racist content. Third, to not teach anti-racism is racist. In their book, Critical to not teach anti-racism is racist. In their book, Critical Race Theory Matters: Education Ideology.
Thirty seconds.
The authors assert, "The very notion that race no longer matters is part of an ideology that justifies and legitimates racial inequality in society." Somers was, and for some of us continues to be, our home. Many of us were taught by the teacher. Some of us remain connected to the educators who shaped us as children, teens, young adults. It is for these reasons that we care deeply about the community. We have grown to be public servants, writers, artists, engineers, social workers, scientists, executives, and even teachers."
Sorry, your time is up. You could submit the document here and I think the board does definitely have a email copy of that.
I'm happy to take it.
Be better and do better.
Hi, my name is Mariandra LaVerde. Listen to the kids because they are your main stakeholders here. They're saying it for a reason. Okay, so, "My family and I visited Hyde Park this weekend and we saw a quote from Eleanor Roosevelt from 1958. Where does it all begin? In small places, close to home. So close..." Hold on. Sorry. "...so close, so small, that they cannot see in any map of the world. It made me think of Somers, because this is where it all begins for our kids. We are preparing our kids to have an identity that transcends geography or political borders and that their responsibilities or rights are derived from membership of a greater human, broader class, humanity. That is what it's called to be a global citizen. I'm personally wonderlust and I would be my greatest joy that my kids travel and work anywhere in the world. But even if kids in Somers stays close to home, in order to succeed, they need to understand and leave DEI. That is, let's look at the biggest employers in Westchester. Pepsi, more than 10,000 employees. Their DEI policy is public. They recognize that they still have much work to be done and progress is reported once a year. IBM, more than 10,000 employees, has a timeline showing what they have implemented on DEI and they still have work to do. Mastercard, more than 10,000 employees. They have been issuing DEI reports for more than three years. Their DEI policy is public. So now, if you don't support DEI, you shouldn't drink Pepsi, but spoiler alert, neither should you drink Coke. If you don't support DEI, you shouldn't own any IBM product, spoiler alert. You should renounce technology. And if you don't support DEI, you should give up using any credit cards. Honestly, I don't think we can find any sizable company that doesn't have a DEI effort. Even if you don't want to work or your kids don't want to work in a big conglomerate, big companies are including in their DEI policies that suppliers need to be diverse and have a comprehensive DEI policy themselves, like a gentleman here said before. And if you believe that DEI trainings or DEI education will constrain you to say that you are racist or privileged, you didn't understand the training at all." DEI education starts from where the, starts when the kids are small and it should grow to help them achieve their goals, their dreams, anywhere in the world or closer to Somers. What are we doing to kids when we deprive them from talking about DEI and being educated on DEI? That would be the great disservice to our children and to ourselves. So, let's start in a small town. Let's see where it leads us, in a small town, like Eleanor Roosevelt said, "So small that it cannot be seen in a map of the world."
Hi, my name is Karen Swoboda and five of my kids have passed through this school system. Four of them right now are in Somers High School. I am president of a newly incorporated nonprofit called Defense of Democracy. In a nutshell, Defense of Democracy is about protecting our public schools, which ultimately protects our children who attend them. I have been asked to speak not just here, where my stepkids are, but I have also spoken up in Poughkeepsie. I've spoken in Orange County. I've spoken in the Wappinger School District. This is an ongoing and international problem regarding the policing of teachers, the intrusive, you know, parents who come in and they decide that they're going to make decisions on behalf of the entire community. This is a national trend. So, what I find disturbing, first of all, when I came here, you know, I ended up scribbling out some of my notes because I get the sense that this is actually a really supportive community. The challenges here are not necessarily where they are everywhere, but there has been a shot across the bow. You have seen the response in your community. It's crystal clear that the majority do not feel that teachers should be policed and reported when someone has decided they're touching on something that makes them uncomfortable. Our teachers have the background education experience to make these decisions, no one else. So, here's my, here's my two cents as somebody who is, who has been witnessing this now. Really, I started seeing it in March, in my school district up in Fishkill. This isn't going to go away. It's very important to take a hard stand now, while we still can, against this kind of behaviors within the community. It's unacceptable. It's just straight up cannot be done. It can't happen. Things went too far this time. I think there's an understanding and I'm hoping that this will be, you know, a learned experience. And I'm truly, you know, very inspired by a lot of these speakers, hoping that Somers can actually be like a gold standard for what my organization could go around and say, "Look at what they did." You know, they didn't tolerate this kind of abuse and harassment of their teachers. They respect their students, they respect their BIPOC and LGBTQ+ communities. This is what you want to be doing. So, this is really good. And before I close, I want to say a quick something to the, all the kids who came out here today. Defense of Democracy has a youth initiative and because we feel that you guys are the ones who are going to make the difference and make the change. I'm talking to the board, excuse me, that your kids here are the ones who are going to do this. We have a youth defending democracy group. It's national. And all of these speakers that just knocked me off my seat when they came down here and speak, I want to talk to all of them. So, the website is defensivedemocracy.org. Please get in touch with me. I'm talking to you guys up there, but I can say that because I'm leaving. Thank you.
Defense, defense.
Defense, not friends, okay.
Hi, my name is Jeff Feldman and I want to thank you for the opportunity to let myself and others, community members, speak. I'm a proud parent of three boys that have gone through this school system and the school system did them right. And one of the primary reasons why the school system did my children right was because of the teachers. What makes a school system good is not anybody that's on the stage, but it's the teachers. That's where the rubber meets the road. That's where learning is done, okay? So, we've got some great teachers. Unfortunately, an incident occurred, right, where a teacher did something that may or may not have violated a policy. But what occurred after that fact was offensive and demeaning. That teacher wasn't meant to be demeaned, I'm sure, but it was a demeaning act to go into a classroom in the middle of a lesson and stop a lesson in front of the children. This is a role model. This is a teacher and she stopped, I'm sorry, he or she is stopped in the middle of a class. That's not the way to handle a problem. I'm going to assume that the lesson was inappropriate. Let's assume it was inappropriate. The way to respond to an inappropriate lesson is, when it's over, it's a 30-minute lesson. No one's going to die in a 30-minute lesson. Go to the teacher and say, "Hey, that's not appropriate. What was done was wrong and that teacher deserves an apology."
I'm so tired. Good evening, Dr. Blanch, members of the board and members of my community. My name is Tiomara Gonzalez and I'm a parent of two children in the Somers School District. I'm also an educator and administrator. I'm here today to share my profound appreciation for the return of a teacher at the high school this week, who, in my opinion, based on the available information that I have access to, was inappropriately removed from the classroom and unjustly targeted and treated by various members of this community. She is clearly an anti-racist, community ally, a reflective educator, a tremendous student advocate, and appears to have worked very hard to uphold culturally responsive practices in her classroom. I'm speaking quickly because I know you're at the timer. I sincerely hope three things moving forward. Number one, we can reflect on how this situation transpired over these past few weeks and ensure that we are appropriately supporting our courageous staff to implement the New York State Guidelines for CRS and realize the vision of our school system to create, and I quote from the CRS framework, "Students have a critical lens through which they challenge inequitable systems of access, power, and privilege." A vision that I think closely aligns to the IB program, that again, I quote, "Build intercultural understanding and respect and also encourages students to become active, compassionate, and lifelong learners who understand that other people with their differences can also be right." As a reminder to all district and school leaders who are responsible for upholding the principles of the CRS framework, two, should support staff in embedding and embedding resources that emphasize cultural pluralism and social justice. Partner with teachers to audit curriculum to assess the presence of implicit bias or omission of cultural practices, perspectives, sorry. Create learning communities for teachers and students to engage in topics that directly address educator and student identities and understand and unpack privilege. Provide opportunities for teachers and leaders to receive trainings on topics such as critical self-reflection, disproportionality, anti-bias, developing racial literacy, and combating racism. Number two, we can move forward together to support the DEI effort and DEI leader because success with this work helps all of our children. I personally am committed to working with our educators and fellow neighbors to ensure that I do my part to uphold the CRS framework as a parent and a community member by partnering with teachers and school leaders, to inform them of and assist them with school and community needs, supporting to generate ideas about concepts that my children and peers may learn about, engage in my own professional learning by participating in decision-making programs such as CTE, PTA, and attending school board meetings. And finally, number three, I really hope that one day my children are able to enroll in this said teacher's 10th grade English class someday and be able to unpack power and privilege in the context of various communities in addition to their own power and privilege and are empowered as agents of positive social change. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Sharon Page. I still have two children in the district, same as last time. I came tonight because I imagine, like many folks in the room, I am a concerned parent. In April 2021, as you all know, the New York State Board of Regents began an effort to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion in schools across New York. And that initiative, as was just referenced, is the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, or CRS. The four guiding principles of that framework are to create a welcoming and affirming environment for all students, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and ongoing professional learning. And per the New York State Guidelines, students who experience academic success are prepared for rigor and independent learning. Students understand themselves to be contributing members of an academically rigorous, intellectually challenging school and classroom community. Students demonstrate an ability to use critical reasoning and take risks. I'm concerned because I want to make sure that my children and all of our children have those opportunities. I want all children to be welcomed, affirmed, and challenged by high expectations and rigorous instruction, to have access to inclusive curriculum, and to be able to reason critically, ask hard questions, and be part of difficult, challenging, and uncomfortable conversations. I want all children to feel safe to take risks, to challenge norms, to ask hard questions, and participate in challenging conversations in the classroom, with their teams, on the school bus, wherever they may arise. I want all of our children, like it says in our school's mission, to be prepared to be global citizens. And I want DEI initiatives to be supported and continued so that our children are prepared to be part of this world. In fact, as was referenced earlier, a quick Google, a quick Google search shows that the largest companies in Westchester, PepsiCo, IBM, Avon, Mastercard, all employ over 10,000 people, Xylem Inc., ITT Corporation, all of these companies have DEI policies and protocols in place because, according to one of their websites, "A diverse, equitable, and inclusive workforce is a stronger workforce. And we create a culture that amplifies the voices of our people and provides opportunities for everyone to realize their full potential." We want, as a school, as a district, as a community, to prepare our students to be global citizens. But I am a concerned parent because when we oppose or attempt to delegitimize the work of DEI, we're not even preparing them for Westchester County, much less the challenges they'll face when they leave the Somers School District and enter the world as adults. As concerned parents, we all need to pay attention to DEI now and fully recognize its vital importance and value. And most importantly, I implore you all to listen to the voices of the students you have heard tonight, who've been sharing in comments, in petitions, and the recent alumni, what their experiences have been in this district. DEI isn't about adult politics. It's about taking basic steps to ensure that all Somers students have a welcoming, harassment-free, and affirming education. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlotte St. Rose, three kids in the school district. Thanks all the speakers for tonight. Thanks to the board for all the work that you've done. I just want to give a quick reminder that this is your community. These are your children. We all have stories. We can all tell you stories that will make people in this room cry, that our kids have experienced. But because we don't call the news, we don't call attorneys, we don't run to social media, doesn't mean you should not listen to us, okay? Listen to us, listen to our children, and we will support you. Thank you.
All right, it looks like we have come to the end of the public comment. Oh, I'm so sorry, please.
Serena Diamond, I just wanted to reflect a little bit on where we started this meeting, just for a moment, because what I heard by the International Baccalaureate Organization validating more than a decade of commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our curriculum, top to bottom, high school, working on middle school, validating that our administration, top to bottom, is committed to that. So, the fact that we have had a horrific anomaly for one situation should not undermine and not have the board or our public second-guessing the commitment that this school and this culture has to that diversity, equity, and inclusion. When I sat at the table, you guys have done even more from that and you have continued to build that culture. The fact that reaction to what no one in the public really knows transpired, but fear and ignorance will respond, it is so important that you guys continue that good work and do not allow ignorance and fear, just as these students implored you to not let ignorance and fear dictate the way that you respond or the support that you provide to our teachers, our staff, and our administrators. They're counting on you and our community is counting on you.
Any last public comment?
Hello. My name's Jay, I'm 17 and I'm a senior at high school. I am not a public speaker. I have severe anxiety, so I'm sorry if my words don't sound like words.
You're good.
I just, the only reason I'm actually talking is because I've never felt safe in a room with this many adults, so thank you for that. The main thing I wanted to talk about is, I think, that a lot of hate in kids and students is from the way other peers have affected them or because of what they've been taught by their parents. And I feel like if that was taught more in schools, there would be a lot less of that. Reason I'm saying this is because when I was like really little, you know how like two-year-olds have no filter and anything just comes out? two-year-olds have no filter and anything just comes out? Literally in my preschool class, we had a black student come in, and one of the kids went, "Why is that student another color?" and made like five other kids freak out, and there was this whole scene. So that was eventful. And I felt like I was one of the only ones who knew about it. Like, it seems like this topic that no one wanted to talk about. My parents did not raise me hateful. I can say that confidently. I was -- my mom is a teacher in the Bronx, and at her school, there's a lot of diversity. And she used to take me to school with her whenever, like, no one could watch me at home. So I grew up with a lot of -- was seeing a lot of black students, Muslim students, Hispanic, Latino, whatever, any color. So I basically was exposed to that at a really young age, and it felt really weird when other kids my age or students did not know that and were just used to growing up surrounded by all white people. So I feel like that's something that my mom did that was good for me because it was normal to me, and it just felt weird that it wasn't normal for everyone else. Another thing is that there are some kids with parents who are very opinionated, so that gets pushed onto the kids. I am transgender. I was a girl, and now I go by male pronouns, and I changed my name. Growing up, that was really, really hard because no kids knew what that was ever because their parents never told them anything about it, and if they did, it was always negative. I remember a really traumatic moment where a kid on my bus told me that if I didn't do what he said, he was going to tell other people that I liked girls. And that was really, really scary because I was used to people harassing me for that as such a young kid, and I think there's something really wrong with that, that if you're such a young child at such a young age and you could be filled with such hate. And, yeah. And it's still a thing because I have a younger brother who, as of now, identifies as he was born as and doesn't -- like, there's nothing to attack him for, but he gets bullied because his friends know that I'm related to him. And I feel like that's really wrong because my brother did nothing wrong. I just, I don't, I don't think it's right that kids are raised that way. And I think if schools taught them that, you should be accepting of other people in ways that their parents don't teach them, that people, kids can grow up to be much better people.
So, board, it looks like we've moved to the board member. Final comments?
Okay. I'll start, okay? I have just three points to make. The first point, I forgot to mention when we talked about the athletic projects. I think I want the community to support it, and I think the athletic project will actually draw a lot of people visiting Somers. Personally, I have grandkids living in different towns. When they come to Somers to play sports, one thing is they like to have a supper here. So the restaurants here, like Burger Barn, all these, you know, they benefit from all these sports activities. So if we have improved our facilities, I'm sure we're going to have a lot more sports teams come to Somers. I think it's a good thing for families and a good thing for business. Second point I want to make is also I'm glad Dr. Blanch included the IB program as well as athletic projects in the same meeting, and that's a balance. Otherwise, I would feel bad. I think it's, you know, we are not just favoring one thing or the other, academics and the sports. The third thing, may take a little longer if you allow me. Recently, I actually dream a lot. The DEI topic came to my dream, which I just unbelievable, you know, this is not my age, but it did. In fact, I created a game after the dream. I call it, it's really a dice game, or you can call it die game, or you can say DEI game, however. Why? This is a simple game. I would teach anybody interested to have this and play. I basically use a bunch of colored dyes. Let's just give it simple. Say you have 25 dyes, five each color, white, black, yellow, brown, even green, whatever. And how you play this game is simple, having a little box, like a lunchbox or any box or a container for food box. You can play with anybody, your buddies. Let's say two people start playing. You can say, "I like pick a color." You like pick color. Put it in a box, you shake it, and then you allow each to say, guess which color has more, you know, points. As you know, a die has one up to six, so the maximum is 30 per color. And if you play long enough, you'll find out. No winner. Black or white. Okay? Chances are equal. If you don't believe me, you can come challenge with me, and we can play till, you know, we are ours. I do work long hours. And you can change color. You say, "Okay, let's choose a yellow with white, black with yellow, whatever." The results are the same, equal. No discrimination. Color does not discriminate. Now, if you want to play with more people coming in, pick another color, throw it in. Instead of 10 dice, it can be 15, 20, 25. And you can pick your choice. You can do that. Again, I bet you the answer is same. Okay? Equality. No discrimination. And inclusion. Any color you want, you add in. So that was the game I actually came up after a, you know, sort of a, I don't know how it really came into my dream. In fact, I sent a note to Ms. Winters. I say, "When is this year's happy holidays?" So she was working at 5:45 this morning, or yesterday morning, whatever, morning, and says, "You missed it. It was in November." I said, "How come? I thought it was always December. I want to enter my game into the happy holidays. I want everybody to know this die game, or DEI game, or dice game. It's very easy to play and fun to play."
1995 on Amazon.
You can play 15 more games that challenging math in addition to this simple one I just told you, okay? So if your interests come to me, I will teach you the other 15 games. Thank you.
Thank you, Efe.
I thought you were timing me 30 minutes.
I'm kind of glad we don't have three-minute time. I do have some things to say, like typically, like when we're on the board, we have to stand unified, and we don't speak on our individual behalf. Really what I'm saying tonight is from my own individual lens, although I am a board trustee. And we have all these moments, like typically, board meetings are for community members to speak, which I'm so grateful for. It's for school personnel to speak, which I'm so grateful for. We typically just ask questions and give soundbites, which never capture the nuances of how we feel. And I feel there's been so much that's happened in the last, I think, two weeks. It feels like years, but two weeks. It feels like a long time. So I did have some things that I wanted to say only because I think it behooves me to say something as a, as a Somers community member. So I wanted to write it down so I wouldn't lose the nuance either. So I'm a mother, I'm a wife, I'm a daughter, I'm a sister, immigrant from India, educator, Catholic, and a BOE trustee, not in order of importance, except mother, that is definitely my lens that I live my life through. These roles and experiences I've had have shaped my perspective and the lens through which I see the world. I ran for the BOE in 2017 after a friend of mine in town thought I would be a good addition to the BOE with my experience and my sensibilities. I should beat her up for this, actually, to be honest. I found it to be a good time to run as my kids were getting older and I would have time to do good on a local level. People say BOE seats and local elections are really important. It's because it has an increased ability to make an impact locally in your town, in your schools. Maybe it's because we have more opportunities to connect with community members and discuss issues with people who are going to vote in these elections. I'm not really sure what it is, but there's something about the impact of local elections. This is my understanding around public schools. It hasn't always been, again, because as you grow older, your understanding around public schools and education changes. So my understanding of public schools right now is that it's here to maintain democracy. America's founders believed the same thing. It was created to maintain democracy. One of the fundamental ways we maintain the democracy is through the voting process, and that's why I sit here today in front of you. This past midterm election, I heard on the news that Gen Z had an unprecedented voter turnout that shook things up. This includes ages 18 to 30. And I think about that because both of my girls graduated at the age of 18, ready to vote. So I think about the impact and the power of what schools can do when it comes to shifting dynamics in whichever way that you wish. Many of our Somers high school students are able to vote by the time they graduate, and I said, and both of my daughters were able to vote. I wanted them to have the critical lens, the thinking skills to be able to sift through information, have difficult conversations with people, articulate their own thinking, have some paradigm shifts in these conversations in all aspects of their lives, not just with me sitting at home and discussing these things, but in the classrooms. I wanted them to have agency when it came to be, when it came to exercising their right to vote, their right and their privilege. Although many of our students will have these opportunities at home, my girls and I talk about this all the time, a lot of their time is spent like on the fields, in classrooms, in the hallways. So what a great opportunity to be able to exercise those skills in class. I, just like you, want all of your kids and my kids to feel safe, nurtured, and respected in school, respected for their ideologies and identities, as long as your ideologies are not inflicting pain on somebody else's identity. This was not always the case. Sitting on the BOE, I had no agenda when I ran. I think I wanted all kids to just have more access to opportunities, equity, if you will. My platform, I think back then, had two points, data-driven decisions and community and connectedness. I still believe that today. My questions have always been at the board meeting, exec session, public session, what are we doing? Why are we doing what we're doing? And what data do we have to support that? And what are the strengths of our community? And how do we work to make everyone feel connected to each other and the community? My work on the BOE has still been to work on those initiatives. Sometimes we talk about things like in code, and we don't really, we beat around the bush, and I'm going to be as transparent as possible. Recently, I commented on a social media post on the author of the book that's been discussed recently at previous board of meetings. And I said a few things, but this is the gist. I sit on the BOE, and I do not condone the actions taken by the district and will not stand by an agreement either. Again, we stand unified on a lot of things, but I, as an individual, although I happen to be board trustee, I still stand by that comment. I don't agree with the decision and the process and the approach that was taken. I actually want my kids, who've graduated already from Somers, to have discourse in classrooms that make them uncomfortable, but their dignity is maintained. I want my kids to grapple with ideas and conversations that make them think and pause. Not every lesson will be perfect. Again, I said, I'm an educator. I've made mistakes myself. But I want teachers to provide opportunities for students to do that. That's my belief as a human. And if students feel uncomfortable, I want them to be able to speak up and self-advocate with the teacher, and again, build that culture of safety. Again, that's maintaining a democracy, creating these citizens who know when to speak up. I'm not sure why we use the approach we did, but I just can't stand by agreement. On the flip side, I'm so grateful for all the wonderful experiences and opportunities my daughters have had. Many of them were in the classroom with caring, compassionate, risk-taking educators like the teacher we've been discussing. To have her as a teacher is truly a blessing. My daughters are blessed. She's by no means perfect, and the lesson could have been adjusted, but I want her dignity maintained, as I want all educators to intentionally do right by our kids. They are humans. They are humans, and they are learning and growing with your kids too, our educators. My concern just remains with the approach taken by the district, including the communication sent to the community. There are times when I was younger, I would be someone in certain circles, have to morph myself in other situations. We call that code switching. Code switching is a term often used when people do this. In recent years, I've stopped doing that. I don't want to live life personally or professionally where I feel I'm betraying myself. So I am who I am as a mom, as a daughter, educator, BOE trustee. It isn't always pretty, but it's real and it's authentic. There's a sense of liberation that comes with that. So the time that I spend personally or professionally, and that includes this seat, it feels that I'm doing something that feels rewarding and that I'm expending energy in a way that could potentially make an improvement in the world that my, our kids are herding from us. I've never sat at a BO meeting and bashed the district anyway, I've always spoken in support in public. This is a moment where we just disagree, and that's okay. I just have to be true to myself, and I don't want to betray myself. And we talk about this at board meetings, often our kids are watching. My girls are watching. They're watching me speak. They're watching me speak on their behalf, on other kids' behalf. I can't betray them. Sitting on the BOE, one has to remember why we assume this role to begin with. I was elected by individuals who felt the school would be in safe hands with me as a trustee. I need to remember that as a BOE trustee, my first allegiance is to my conscience and ethical compass, and second is the community who vote in these elections and the students. And I thank you all for your time.
Do you mind if I go? I'll try to follow that. So I too did want to take this time to, you know, just share some of my thoughts, feelings, and, you know, try to clarify some things that I felt was important, you know, for myself and for the community. For one, you know, first off, I'll start off by apologizing in past board meetings. Ray and others, and I'm going to use his name right now, but Ray and others are part of the, are district employees, right? And to be clear, you know, I have to do a better job in making sure that we're protecting them, right? And not, not putting them in harm's way or allowing inappropriate, you know, slander to come out in these meetings. That's not what this for. And I apologize, I didn't do that in the past, and, you know, I'll do better next time. So one thing I do also want to clarify with the community, like there's a lot going on, right? And we understand there's a lot of emotions on both sides from multiple different topics. You know, we want you to know, like, we do appreciate, there's a lot of good feedback coming in, and we're getting a lot of emails, and that's good, and a lot of people coming up and talking to these meetings here, you know, they're extremely helpful. Yeah, and I know we often get, you know, we get asked as far as, hey, we want answers back, or what are you doing? A lot of these recent ones are personnel issues. And as a board and as a, as part of the administrative team, we will not comment on personnel issues, all right? I will tell you that a lot of the information on social media and emails and, you know, stuff that comes up here and people that talk about it, there's half-truths to a lot of it, right? We wish we could clarify it, but we can't. And I think anybody would agree, a lot of us work in the public sector, and I know Ray loves when I use this comparison, but, you know, you'd expect the same level of confidentiality from your internal HR or from your manager in not talking about that. So look, we're here, they're, what we do in exec session is we do talk about those personnel matters. We are privy to that. Everything else that we talk about has to be held here. If it's not a personnel matter, it's talked about behind closed doors for the safety of the individuals. Even in times, a lot of those things for children, things like that, it's all kept, we don't even know the names, you know, in a lot of cases. But again, we will keep that confidential. We cannot share all the information with you and just let the community know, a lot of this stuff, there's half-truths on it. On that note, you know, continuation, look, hey, as we go through this, you know, we learn. We all learn from mistakes. I know I learned from mistakes. We're all going to make mistakes in life. You know, I'm not perfect. The board's perfect. I don't think-- The board's perfect, I don't think administration's perfect, I don't think anybody in this room can stand up and say that they're perfect. You know, but we look at our mistakes, and we're going to learn from them, right? We take a look at whether it's, you know, policies or procedures, or whatever it might be, and how we can get better. How do we, you know, change communication, or whatever it might be. But the important thing is, and I think what's important for us, you know, as a board, or me as an individual, right, in my many roles as a parent, board member, you know, work, or whatever it might be, is having that oversight and making sure that, you know, we're continuously learning from it, and we're not making the same mistakes over and over again. And I don't think we will, right? I believe that there is takeaways from this, and we'll grow and learn from it. Regarding the DEI coordinator position, you know, I can only speak for myself, but I believe I'm speaking for everybody on the board. Look, I think we're all in support of it, right? I don't think anybody wants to see the position go away. I think there's definitely a need for it, and there's been no conversation, you know, at this meeting to, you know, get rid of it. You know, at the board, you know, we don't make the decisions as far as what that curriculum may or may not be. We do have the seat committee that's been established. I know the administration team spends a lot of time on, you know, what this curriculum should be, whether it should be talked about. We have a seat committee, they open that up to the public, and go online, sign up for it, if you want to be part of it, what needs to be talked about. That's where you should go and get involved and make sure that you're contributing and having some of that conversation. And it should be balanced, right? And how can we get everybody to listen to one another? Because that's the most important thing out of this, is we just need to be able to listen to each other and understand where everybody's coming from, so we can all move on and learn from it. But so yes, if you're not familiar with the seat committee, it's on the website, you can go in, sign up, and, you know, be part of that process there. What else did I have?
Someone timing you?
I am, yeah. Thirty seconds left. I have a game that I produced too.
Go ahead, go ahead, challenge you with the game.
That's really what we're doing in executive session.
Yeah.
Yeah, play any of his games. I think that's all I had. I did have something, I'll circle back. But no, I mean, thank you, you shared your points on that, you know, what you talked about, and look, I do appreciate the open conversations we've had offline, you know, just about your different viewpoints and all that stuff, and it's been very collaborative and safe for me and hopefully for you as well. So I just want to say I enjoyed that, you know, conversation with you. I think that's it, that's all I got.
I think, I guess I'll go next, and I did write this out because I didn't want to fumble my words tonight. But I did want to be clear in what I wanted to say, so. This past month has brought some challenges to our school district, and I've sat at this board table, and I've listened to every single speaker that has come before us as a board. I've read every email that came into our email, and I've seen various social media posts. I want to be clear that I support our administrators, and I trust them, and I support our teachers, and I trust them. I've volunteered my time and engaged with many individuals in this school district for the past eight to 10 years, and while we may not always agree on how to do something, I know that we all have a common goal to do what's best for all the children in our school district, and the how, and that we've been able to come together and do great things. And that's why I know I decided to run for the board. We are also all humans, and we may stumble along the way as to how best to handle any given situation, but I am confident it is never done with malicious or nefarious intent. I'm also a parent in this school district, and I know how frustrating it can be when you feel that answers are vague, or ambiguous, or not satisfactory when an issue does occur. I cannot speak for everyone, but I am sure I'm not alone when I say I wish there was more that we can say when these issues come up. But procedures and the law must be followed, and the bottom line is that there was a process and the process was followed. And I had the benefit last week of sitting at the middle-years program parent panel for SMS as the IB verification team visited the school and toured the classrooms and spoke with the teachers and the parents and the students. And it was so uplifting to hear what a positive experience the verification team had visiting our school. The amount of buy-in from our teachers and investment of the school district was noticed. Seeing the results in the classrooms, the students being engaged and interacting with one another in a meaningful way. Some of the feedback that was shared to us from the administration was that your school, and some of this might be repetitive from what Nick had mentioned earlier, but I think it bears worth repeating. Your school is a place that honors all learners and students. Every student has access to the curriculum and include it as much as possible. The learner profile is a natural part of your school's culture that contributes to life learning. The students we met with feel happy to be here, valued, notice a difference in their learning, and were able to articulate the NYPD framework. Your school has gone above and beyond what is required to be in place for a verification visit. Every class we observed, the students were engaged in learning and offered opportunities for inquiry. The interdisciplinary units submitted are engaging, exhibit transfer of knowledge, and will be used as a model by the IB. The leadership structure of your district is that of a team. It is obvious how much respect and support each other. This is unique to your district. This is what is happening in our schools, and this is what I support. Student-focused teaching of critical thinking skills, teaching students how to think and not what to think. Is everything in our schools perfect and can never be improved? Of course not. But let us model the philosophy we are preaching to our students, that we are all lifelong learners. As I read so many statements from current and past students recently, it is evident to me, critical thinking skills, difficult conversations, and DEI work are an important and necessary piece for all our students as they prepare to be global citizens in our ever-changing world. DEI is about supporting all students and helping everyone achieve their best. I hope that is something we can all agree on: supporting students and helping all students
You know, I've done a bit of thinking after the last meeting. I was not happy with my response at the end. I was, I wasn't prepared for what we faced, in all honesty. So it just got me to be more reflective, first of all, and in thinking back to when I first joined the board, what I thought this was going to be about and what it should be about, and that was listening, listening to the community, listening to understand, you know, what, how we can help represent our community and help guide the schools to be better. And I also, the other thing I always remembered when I first started here, my very first session on the board, quite a few years ago, I'm not going to count right now. But it was, how does the school, I'm not a professional educator, just first of all, I'm just a board member, and it was always looking for, how does the school not only find the successful students, but how do they know when there's someone who's struggling? How do they know when, and what processes, what's in place in the school to find the kids that need help? And that's really where the inclusion comes in, when you start talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. It, you know, it encompasses everyone, you know, it's about empathy, thinking about other people, compassion. It's about the safe spaces, you know, and I think as this goes into our whole community, and we heard a lot of this tonight too, and I think it's really important, I don't expect everyone to agree on everything and what the right path forward is. I do expect people to treat each other with dignity. I do expect safety for us to be able to discuss things together, and, and, and... I'm not sure I held up my end of that bargain last time by allowing some of the unfounded, outlandish accusations just get said in public, and that's not okay. And so I apologize for only listening at that time. It still makes me angry, though. One thing I love about being on the board is we get some opportunities to get in the schools. We get some opportunities to see leadership in the schools is so collaborative. And when you have an opportunity, you know, to get in the high school with some of the learning leadership team and see how they work together, they don't agree on everything. But they're so engaged, they're so supportive of one another. It just, I always leave those experiences with so much energy and excitement for what that is going to feed into our kids. And so I, I know it's, others have said it here, but, you know, repetition is just fine, so I thank all of you, I thank our team here, I think very highly of, and I apologize if I don't say it enough. That's administration, that's our teachers. And then, you know, we all know, we're all here, I think, if, what's one of the first things you would ask a board member about, and it's about, well, we want our kids to be able to have a great experience in school. Challenging, and, you know, growing up, adolescence, there's a lot of tough stuff that they go through, and I give a lot of credit, well, give credit to parents, give credit to teachers in helping our kids find their way. And then learn how can they be part of a great community, and be understanding of others, and engage with others, and still be safe. And, you know, it's the critical thinking, it's how to think critically, it's not what to think, that's not what we're teaching. I see a lot of that, that's what goes on in our schools, and that's how I view the whole DEI part of it also, you know, that, the IB program, congratulations, by the way, once again, very proud of everything that you guys have accomplished so far. But it, what's always strikes me with the IB program, and strikes me with the district, is how interdisciplinary everything becomes. And that's what DEI really is also, it's, you know, that's part of life, and we've heard from, tonight, we've heard from alumni who've gone out in the world and have shared the importance that they see. And any of us who have the opportunity and the good fortune to travel, I've had a few times where I've gotten to parts of the world that, in all honesty, going there, I didn't know that much about it. And that's what I learn the most, and that's when I learn, I, boy, I get out of my own little world, and, and, just, I've learned a lot, sorry, I'm fumbling over my words a little bit. So I, that's what I appreciate in our schools, and I just wanted to make sure I said that tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Still, ten seconds.
I'm going to give Ife my time, but I do want to...
Ten seconds, yes.
Thank you.
Ten seconds. I forgot to say something because I was so moved, actually. We have so many students came to speak.
Thank you to the kids who came to speak that are leaving now because they probably have to get home. We appreciate you, we heard you.
Appreciate you, students.
Thank you for being here, because you are the ones that we are here to serve.
Thank you.
And we talked about having a student member on the board before. So this speaker's coming to talk really reinforced that thinking. We may really seriously consider that proposal you made before.
All right.
Okay.
That was your ten seconds?
Angus.
Excellent. So I didn't prepare anything magical to say, but as you were all speaking, because you're all really brilliant, and I appreciate you, and I really value our time together, even though we do have wildly different opinions about stuff and things. So I, first of all, for anybody who's still here, thank you for still being here. I think it's abundantly clear that for us as trustees, this is a qualitatively different meeting than we were expecting, because it's a qualitatively different meeting than we've had over the past month. I'm going to try and keep myself together here. My kids are here today, which is pretty remarkable, they usually watch from home, and they've been pretty upset about how people in the community talk to someone that they love. And I have to apologize, friends, because we have allowed people in the community to talk really horrible things about the people who show up every single day in the face of all sorts of foolishness in service of our kids. So Dr. Blanch, I'm going to join my fellow trustees and apologize for not shutting down the foolishness and the slander and the hateful speech, just as I would hope that you all, and Nick, I want to say thank you for the time that you also shut that down, that we all have to stand up alongside and for one another regardless of what we believe in, right? I think what I realized, thank you, what I realized is that sometimes you've been hurt and tone-policed so often that you forget that it's okay to have a voice. And so I apologize that I forgot that it was okay for me to stand up and say that this is not acceptable, for fear of being bullied by the same members that continue, which is exactly the reason why we need to have these very conversations, and why we do need to have anti-bullying work in the schools, which our children spoke so beautifully about today. I think it is extraordinary because what we saw today was different. The kids that were here were speaking, these are the children that we are here to serve. These are the children that you build beautiful experiences for every single day in our schools, and these are the humans that we need to listen to, right? Angry mobs can come and go, but the humans that are inside of our classrooms every day that are learning from you and the folks that you work with, that's who we need to make sure that we're serving. And we need to support their teachers so they feel safe, and they feel confident, and they feel prepared to have hard conversations, because, like all y'all said, we're going to make mistakes. I make mistakes on a regular basis, they'll tell you all about it. But you show up tomorrow and you try to do better. I think we're trying to do that. So thank you for giving us that opportunity. I have tremendous gratitude for allowing us all to grow together. It's been painful, but worth it, I think. There's a quote that Onora O'Neill, who's a philosopher, said, "That well-placed trust grows out of active inquiry rather than blind acceptance." So I implore all of you to continue actively inquiring and asking questions from a place of curiosity and hope. I will try to do the same. I am thrilled to have shared in the experience of the NYPD visit, and thank you, Ms. Cutino, if you're watching, for making sure that they came in person. Sorry, high school, you didn't get the in-person visit, but the in-person visit in the middle school was pretty extraordinary. And to hear the IB coordinator talk to us about the opportunities that were open to the children who went through that diploma program was mind-blowing. In fact, I do believe that somebody said, oh, I think it was you, Claire, I was saying, gosh, I really hope my kid takes advantage of this program, and I think you said something like, well, you know, my kid's going to take advantage of that program in the best possible way, right? Because you know it's an extraordinary program, and we believe in it, and we believe in it because we have our kids in these programs, and I think that that speaks volumes to the opportunity that all of us here are trying to support in our schools, especially us who are volunteers at 9:38 on a Tuesday, not paid employees of the district. Anyhow, I've rambled, I apologize. Thank you for your time, thank you for showing up, thank you for making this a different
So I'll go ahead and just kind of wind it down. So just before I make my couple of comments, we have, you know, students who've done a really great job of kind of closing down the fall athletic season and things, so we have some students involved in our cross-country, and our track work, as well as our football teams moving on, but we are ready to also start our winter season sports. So we get a whole nother group of students involved in that work, so just to let you know that that's coming. And I'm glad the board was able to see and hear some of the celebrations and work that's happening within side of our classrooms or outside. Actually, towards the end of the day, one of our teachers who supports our service club here, the middle school, was working and supporting the children, talking about the services, looking to support local families as far as we look at celebrating families and the Thanksgiving tradition and things, so there's just so many things happening. On a day-to-day, you just walk down the hall and you're going to find some pretty amazing things, so. And that's where I wanted to kind of start, and then I'll kind of finish with it. Means different things, I think, and different experiences, different folks. I'm seven out of eight kids in the house when I grew up. Was left behind a few times. I would say it was by accident, but it probably was on purpose, but it was meant out of love. And, you know, it was, there was always the intent and the purpose there was, you know, you kind of mess with your... you can't mess with your... I had four sisters and three brothers, and so there was always lots of interesting kind of dynamics in the family. And there was lots of pieces where you would disagree, and sometimes it was demonstrated to you how you were not the strongest at the table or on the wrestling mats or whatever it may be, or you were not allowed to eat until you were, had enough food for everybody else. Yet, yet, when there was an adversity that challenged the family, it snapped together like you'd never seen before. And it still does. And so I, my own children, I hope I can say that I led that life, and they, I have four of them and things like that, they kind of had their own pieces. But I can tell you that every time that we face the shared adversity as a family, things were dropped, everything else, and the personal kind of, what is the challenge we have ahead of us? What other pieces that we need to make so that we can go ahead, come together, sharing? Either it could be a physical stress or that we're dealing, a mental stress, or, but it created, every single time that happened, life comes our way, it created a closer, stronger bond for myself and my family. I have been blessed with my administrative colleagues. That is, as a family, I could never, ever imagine being without. So, physical, mental stress, the bonds that are created there, lifetime. We depend upon each other. My teacher colleagues, I was so proud to see Alison appear in that work today, you know, amazing stuff. We talked to Ms. Cutino, we talked to a classroom teacher today, went into a kindergarten classroom the other day, just the things that the kids were doing and where they're at, just greeting, just, you know, pride moment. When we all went through the COVID experience in our community, the Solmers family, I believe, came together. We put a lot of things to the side and we came together through the both physical and mental stress, financial stress that we, many of us dealt with of what was next day going to bring. Closer bond and move us forward. The idea that I've always believed in, I don't know if my grandfather told it to me, but I can't remember who was the quote, but adversity doesn't necessarily build character, it reveals it. And I would say that's true with shared adversity, that the adversity that we have gone through demonstrates a character. I've talked to my own family, I've talked to my administrative family, my community families here. I can say really without reservation that the reality is, is that the bond is there. If you think about, I always liked the analogy, maybe he used it as well too, the idea about you've got this heavy truck going over a small bridge. It doesn't cause cracks so much as it may reveal the weaknesses that are already there. I would say that without reservation, the work of the administration team, faculty, staff, families, we heard so many families tonight, and our children who may be watching us tonight at home or hearing different things, mine included, and then also the children who came and spoke tonight, that we are committed without a doubt to learning for all, for all of us, adults, children, families, communities coming together. There are no cracks in the bridge to reach any experience we want for the Solmers School District. I really think there's only opportunities to build stronger bonds through facing adversity. We are in a moment right now, we have been for a while, of dealing with shared experience of going through, how will our community, how will our family, our Solmers family, respond through the shared adversity? I appreciate my fellow members of the board here and for the board speaking that directly. There is a commitment, looking for the next right answer. Best thinking, best thoughts, best intents today, and what we have tomorrow, we will all get up. If we got to go to sleep, I know some of these guys, they'll get up and they'll do the same thing. Best intents, best purposes, best plans going forward. That's our next right answer. And then on Thursday, it'll be the next right answer. It's not standing still. I truly heard that from our community too, asking us, think about the next right answer for the school and the community. So as we do move forward, again, following our kind of thought about moving forward in excellence, we are committed to, I think, and I heard reflection numerous times over here, so Alison will be very proud of us, using the international backglow, you know, learner trait of reflective practices. We must embrace that. How can I do better? How can the team do better? How can the district do better? How can our children do better? It's not only are we right, wrong, and imperfect, it's just how can we improve and move forward? That idea about reflection is so important. There have, and I know one of the board members spoke, been certainly many challenges in the district over the last few weeks. I do want to mention some things that I am absolutely appreciative, and again, as evidenced by tonight, I think there is an absolute commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion in our school district for the betterment of the school district. The path is clear. A reminder to us all, we are all in a constant state of learning, learning about so many things, and in this particular moment, really diversity, equity, inclusion in our experiences. How can we look for the next right answer? And we must truly model for our children. And I hope we heard and saw the children coming forth this evening as an example of the families, their individual families, their families with, their friends, their families in the community, that that's exactly what we would hope and desire, that our students would come forth and say, how can we be a part of this and do better in our schools? So the reality is, the destination is clear, the betterment for all. And I do want to say, I have over the last couple of months spent more time with Susan Gonzo than probably she would care to, I've got to admit to. So I have certainly more than my own family certainly, and I apologize that she has probably seen me more than her own family. We have spent many evenings till late in, nine o'clock, and I've heard dozens and dozens of community conversations with 75, 55, 50 people. We had a great conversation with Septa last week and things like that. I am certainly appreciative of that experience. I would say that she has proven herself through her actions. I have stood shoulder to shoulder with her. Through my actions, I hope folks can judge me by the actions I take and have an understanding of a full, thorough walkthrough, not a day, not a moment, not a time, not an email. I certainly always work better on those and all those things, but judge me by the actions, my team, our team, by the actions that we go through and say, where have we been since this first day to today? And where I see tomorrow is the work and commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion in our schools. And again, out there, ensuring that with, again, with Susan, right now, I would say she's trying to make it very clear that all voices in our school district must be heard and really think about what's the most appropriate and most inclusive way. So I would say the path is clear, the destination is clear, and we are positioned to now make that journey more than ever before. We are a strong family. It does not mean we create everything, but I do believe the strength in the family is there. If it wasn't, I would not frankly be sitting in this chair. It does not mean we have to agree in everything. It does not mean that we are going to walk out of this and just sing kumbaya, and the reality is, is I believe in the strength of the Solmers District family in every shape, form, or fashion. And I have evidence to prove it on my 13 years in this district. We have faced an enormous amount of life challenges that have come our way. Every single time, it isn't about how are we going to get through this one? It's like, we are going to get through this one, and let's talk about how we get through it. So I appreciate the board giving me a few more minutes to stay, so thanks for not timing. So I appreciate it, and I hope you have, you know, a nice Thanksgiving as we are approaching that just next week. And again, hope you get some time with your family, so thank you.
Do resolve the special meeting workshop of the Board of Education be adjourned motion?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.